Good evening, everyone. I now call this meeting to order. Richmond Public Schools School Board Meeting, Monday, November 8th, 2021. It is 6:07 PM. We will begin our evening with roll call by the clerk, Derek Richardson.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Dorr?
Here.
Ms. White?
Here.
Ms. Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Present.
Dr. Harris Mohammed? Ms. Burke?
Present.
Ms. Page?
Present.
Ms. Rizzi?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you so very much. We're now ready for the pledge of allegiance to be led by...
Ms. Burke, we have to motion Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed.
We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. You may be seated. As we move forward with our meeting this evening, again, good evening to everyone. Dr. Harris Mohammed is not able to be with us this evening, however, she is calling in. Our clerk has set it up for her to call in. Due to health concerns, she's not with us this evening. However, colleagues, I do need a motion that she can participate per phone this evening.
So moved.
Mr. Young moved that Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Page. Any discussion, question? If not, Madam Clerk, we're ready for the roll.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Burke? Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and Dr. Harris Mohammed, good evening. I hope you can hear us okay.
Can you hear us, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you so very much, colleagues. Approval of minutes of the February 1st, February 16th, March 1st, March 15th, April 12th, April 19th, May 3rd, and October 6th, 2021, school board meetings. The reason we have such a listed list of minutes is due when we had our interim clerk. So hopefully, you've had a chance to read through that, and I'd like to have a motion that we approve, or any additions or recommendations to be added. If not, can we get a motion to accept?
I move that we accept the minutes as presented for dates. I don't see the dates, though, that you had listed.
So you don't have a hard copy? Moving on? Yes.
Okay, yep, sorry. February 1st, February 16th, March 1st, March 15th, April 12th, April 19th, May 3rd, and October 4th, 2021, school board meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Jones and seconded by Ms. Rizzi to accept the minutes as listed. Any questions or discussion? If not, we're ready for the roll.
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jones, welcome back as well. Please know that we're with you. Thank you so much. deepest condolences. All right, 1.04, adoption of the agenda. Ms. Gibson?
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item 6.05 to follow 6.01, and to add an item which would provide an update regarding collective bargaining.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Gibson to move 6.05, update on school security after 6.01, and then have 6.06 regarding collective bargaining.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Ms., I have a question. Ms. Dorr? Collective bargaining, do we have any information tonight to share regarding that?
Uh, no, but I think, I do think it would be good to get aligned as a board on next steps. So I would...
To get what?
Aligned on next steps.
So you want that for tonight as well?
I think, I think that is prudent.
Okay. All right, so it's been moved and by Mrs. Gibson and seconded by Mr. Young to move 6.05 under 6.01, and add 6.06, which is an update on collective... Well, I'm not gonna say update because we haven't had a report yet, but to discuss collective bargaining. Any questions? Any conversations, any debate? If not, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed? One more time.
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, the next item on the agenda is recognition...
We need to motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you so much. We now need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Jones? Who? I didn't know who it...
Ms. White?
That was Ms. Gibson.
By Ms. Gibson, okay, thank you. Come on, Mr. Young, help me now.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Gibson and seconded by Mr. Young to approve the amended, to approve the agenda for this evening. Any discussion of questions? If not, we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Dorr?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just get so excited about recognition because it's one of my favorite items on the agenda each evening. And 2.01, recognition of student representative. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I introduce the student representative, I did want to recognize the Franklin Military Academy color guard who presented this evening's colors in honor of Veterans Day. I would like to recognize Cadet Staff Sergeant Jahim Hewlett, Cadet Corporal Ayana Burnson, Cadet Corporal Asia Fairley, Cadet Private First Class Karsha Wingfield, and Cadet Private Angela Romero Rivera. Can we please all show our appreciation to them? And I'm sorry. I think we're good, but thank you very, very much. Can you stand one more time, everybody who was just recognized? Oh, they just went out. Is that what you were saying? It's all right. Can you please convey our appreciation to them? Thank you.
Thank you so very much, and I believe the principal is here, Colonel Hudson. Is that Colonel Hudson in the back? And Colonel Hudson, okay, I see. Help us to also recognize the other persons that are with you. No, you can just tell us from there. I don't mind if you stand, though, because you all work so hard. Colonel Day, yes, thank you so much. Yes. Okay, Sergeant Gilliam, thank you so much. Absolutely excellent. Thank you all so much. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Franklin Military Academy, 7th District, thank you.
All right. It now gives me a great pleasure to introduce November's Student Representative, Anthony Rodriguez Ortiz from George With High School. Anthony Rodriguez Ortiz is currently a senior at George With. Both a scholar and honor roll student, Anthony is a member of Partnership for the Future, the SOAR Scholarship Program, and the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. Anthony is an active member of his church and serves as youth group leader and assists with fundraising activities. He has a deep interest in technology and upon graduation plans to attend James Madison University, where he will major in computer science. Please join me in welcoming Anthony Rodriguez Ortiz.
Anthony, we're so delighted to have you here, and it sounds like you're a pretty busy young man. Do you have some words you'd like to share with us this evening?
I do, if I may. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Camerons, and everyone joining us today. I would first like to thank you all for allowing me to speak with you today. It truly is an honor. As a proud Richmond Public School student, I believe that our schools are great institutions, rich with history and culture that equip us for an ambitious future. However, there is room for improvement that would serve to better prepare me and my fellow classmates for success. I would like to bring to your attention two focus areas, transportation and the construction of a new George With High School. Every morning at George With, I witness many students arrive from the bus 30 or more minutes late to their first period class. Sometimes, I also hear that some students' buses never arrive to pick them up. I am concerned because it puts the students who ride the bus at a disadvantage as they don't have reliable transportation to school. And when the buses fail to arrive, those students are left to scramble for other means of transportation. This leads to misinstructional time, which puts their learning at risk. I propose an integrated rideshare service for RPS students, or the contracting of independent transportation companies to ensure every RPS student has the opportunity to arrive at school hassle-free and on time. I would also like to touch base on the proposal for the construction of a new George With. I am aware that a rebuilding of this school has been in talks for a while now, but I believe we need decisive action now more than ever. I love George With High School, especially its diverse atmosphere of both students and faculty. However, the current state of this school is not for the health and safety of those who attend. The conditions of many fixtures within the school are in need of an extensive overhaul. Furthermore, there is a pest problem within the school that needs to be addressed immediately. The demolition and rebuilding of George With will equip students with a new and sanitary environment. I believe we help achieve this goal with community fundraisers, such as food sales, which can also offer community service opportunities for our high school students. By doing this, we can engage our community and construct a brand-new George With High School for the future Bulldogs who will become the pride of Southside. I thank you all for your valuable time, and thank you so much for listening.
All right, let's show our appreciation. Excellent, excellent. Thank you so very much. We appreciate your wisdom, and we do know that you may need to leave early tonight. We don't expect you to stay the whole meeting. It's up to you. But stay as long as you can, because we know you need to get ready for school tomorrow, and continue to do all those great things that you do at George With and beyond. We thank you. All right, student presentation. Mr. Camerons?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, I am delighted to introduce you to Makai Kirven, who is a junior at Richmond Community High School. Makai has been an honor roll student every year since he has been in school. He is currently enrolled in intermediate band and has played football. Makai is a member of Triumphant Baptist Church and volunteers with the Caritas Program, which provides services for homeless community members. Makai is also a part of the youth choir at Triumphant. He plays solo pieces at wedding and birthday celebrations, and plays the bass drum as well as the violin. Makai first began playing the violin in 4th grade at Ginter Park and participated in orchestra class while a student at Benford Middle School. He enjoyed being a participant in the Richmond Youth Symphony. When Makai graduates, he is interested in majoring in violin at the Berklee School of Music. He enjoys hanging out with his friends in his spare time. Please welcome Makai Kirven.
Good evening.
Okay, everybody else, please turn their mics off, including me. Thank you.
Tonight, oh, tonight I will be playing "Yesu, Joy of Men's Desiring" by Johann Sebastian Bach.
I wanna say woo, too. That was absolutely excellent. We need to get your autograph now. Oh, my goodness gracious. Come on. Okay, can I do that? I'm just so awfully proud. We have two studious young men here this evening. Who said that our young men in Richmond Public Schools don't represent? Makai's grandmother's here, his brother's here, his mom is here. Thank you all. His father is here. Okay, Dad came in. Excellent. Thank you all so much. And he's been a student since elementary school, Richmond Public Schools. His teacher's here, and I met Mr. McLauren. Mc what? McCallan. Please stand up, Mr. McCallan, as well, because he's an REB Award member, right, years ago? Yeah, he's been around for a while, and you just continue to soar. We thank you so very much, and good luck to you. We will get your autograph. And good luck in going to Berklee School of Music. Thank you so much for representing Richmond Public Schools. Well done. All right, and thank you all so much for having the silent applause. We'd just like to hear everybody's name and whatever else, then they can see us on live stream that we're just saluting and lifting up, and we thank you for that. Next item. Hmm, REB Award. Okay, let's hear about that, Superintendent Camerons. I'm perusing the audience.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am thrilled to share this evening that RPS has three REB Awards for Teaching Excellence winners for 2021. If they are here, I know this was a late-breaking announcement, we would love to welcome them down to the front. First, Crystal Corey from Franklin Military Academy. Let's show our appreciation. This is a big night for Franklin Military. Yes, the 7th District. Coming from a long line of teachers, Crystal Corey is at home in the classroom. When you walk through her door, you are greeted with bright colors, anchor charts, famous scientists of color on the walls, student work on display, a class pet, and lab tables, all symbols of high aspirations and expectations for her students. She seeks to ignite curiosity in their minds and allow them to draw from their own experiences because it gives them buy-in and ownership of their learning. As her nominator states, quote, "Ms. Corey goes above and beyond for our students every single day. I've never seen her give up on a student even when they've given up on themselves. She values the contributions of every individual, no matter their abilities, challenges, or backgrounds, and tells them every day how important they are," close quote. As Ms. Corey continues to evolve her teaching practice, she wants to discover more ways to reach her students and help them in and out of the classroom. With an REB Award of $13,700, Crystal Corey will do just that by immersing herself in the rich culture and history of the African diaspora to help further develop cultural competence in the classroom. Can you please join me in showing our profound congratulations to Crystal Corey? And Ms. Corey, can you stay up here, and let me read the other two, and then we'll do a group photo. Does that sound good? All right, thank you. And if you'd like to sit, you can sit, so you don't have to stand there awkwardly for the next two minutes. Our second winner is Stuart Harzenberger from Thomas Jefferson High School, who's brought a little one with him. Fantastic. Stuart Har- Harzenberger, I'll get it right, I apologize. Approaches teaching with a focus on equity and social justice. He leans in and works diligently for his kids. A former student explains, quote, "Not only did I learn how to create art in Mr. Harzenberger's class, I also learned how to advocate for against injustices in my community and school. There were times when it felt like the world was exploding around us, and he would sit and listen to how we felt. I learned so much about how to be a good person in Room 312." His classroom is a place of peace and calm for students. Even tempered with a dry sense of humor, Mr. Harzenberger creates assignments that are choice-based because he believes that when students create work, they have designed from the start. They are more likely to take full ownership. He brings in local artists to share inspiration with his students, and when budgets fall short, he fundraises to ensure his students can engage in new experiences. His efforts are not confined to the classroom. For example, when the school needed a volleyball coach, he stepped in to fill the role. When students couldn't hold garden club without a sponsor, he integrated garden club into his art club. With an REB Award of $14,800, Stuart Harzenberger will participate in an artist residency in the Cycladic Islands of Greece. Let's show our appreciation to Mr. Harzenberger. And who's that with you? And to Hazel for coming out as well. Thank you so much. Have a seat, and we'll do one more. Finally, Christina Mitchell from Benford Middle School. Is Ms. Mitchell here? I'm not sure if she was able to make it, but we will celebrate her nonetheless. Christina Mitchell stands out as an educator because she truly knows her students, her subject, and her craft. Her focus on student achievement, her ability to build strong relationships, and her commitment to excellence in Spanish education are second to none. Señorita Mitchell takes the issue of equity very seriously and is sensitive to the needs of all her students. In her own words, quote, "My classroom is not perfect, but I hope an observer would see and more importantly feel as an environment that is welcoming to all, that encourages participation, student choice, the arts, and opportunities to create language together," close quote. It is working. Her students are engaged, enthusiastic, and have an obvious bond with her and their peers. Señorita Mitchell takes care to develop learning experiences based on who her students are, what they need, and how they excel. An early adopter of new technology, she seeks to bridge the digital divide and make her classes as interactive and as inclusive as possible. With an REB Award of $11,600, Christina Mitchell will explore history and current social issues in Colombia, Bolivia, and Argentina through the arts. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Mitchell from Benford Middle School. All right, could we please have Mr. Harzenberger and Ms. Corey? Why don't you come up, and Hazel, of course, if you would like. And let's get a picture. And let's get a picture.
Again, congratulations to our teachers that are REB Award winners. All right, we're now ready to move with public information. We ask that if you signed up for this evening, we do have over here on my left the stand for you to sign up in advance so that we can move our line quicker. If we do have three persons that sign in advance, if anyone else would like to speak, we ask that you sign, get in line as well to speak after the three. Three minutes per person, five minutes per group. And our clerk will be keeping time, Ms. Richardson. The persons we have listed are Ms. Amy McIntosh, Dr. Michael Thompson and Ms. Jennifer Van Arman. If you would come forward, anyone else after that, we appreciate it so much on this side of the room.
Ms. Bird, could we have the translator, please?
Yes, where is the translator? Okay, thank you, thank you for being here, yes. Yes, it's on there, okay. You can turn it on by the button at the bottom.
Good afternoon, this is an announcement regarding Spanish Interpretation Services that will be available tonight. Buenas tardes, servicios de interpretación al español estarán disponibles esta tarde. Por favor de abordarme si necesita estos servicios, gracias.
Thank you, we may proceed starting with Ms. McIntosh. And we appreciate your signing in before speaking, thank you very much.
Hello? Hi. Good evening, thank you so much, members of the board for your time and attention. My name is Amy McIntosh and I am an English teacher at George With High School. I'm here today to express my grave concerns about the learning environment at George With. I want to be clear that these concerns do not concern, one, the quality of the school building, or two, and I apologize, this is not printed very, the ink is kind of light in my reading. They exist despite the heroic efforts of my colleagues, administration staff and teachers whom I respect deeply. Nevertheless, I want you to know that we need help. There are not enough adults in the building. And too many of our students are spending their days walking the halls. These students and their scores of them, particularly on the ground floor building, I'm gonna try to speak from my notes, but again, I'm having trouble reading them. They're screaming, they're stomping, they bang on my classroom door, they get into fights. They travel inside the halls and outside on the school grounds. And despite our continuous efforts encouraging them to come to class, the efforts of teachers to present lessons that are of interest to our student body, these students are choosing to ignore that and not only reject education, but interfere with the education of others. It is truly a chaotic environment, it is an environment that too often is violent and it is really impeding learning. And again, I apologize that I'm not able to read this lightly printed ink, but the main point I want to make is one that testing, we have to figure out a way to stop this testing. We spent three weeks on weeded testing and almost two weeks on the writing SOL, the first two months of school alone, rather than dealing with the trauma of our students and trying to teach them how to be students again, which is something that they're not in a place, many of them, to do. Although I know the board has pushed hard to remove security and SROs, we need the positive and restorative practices in place and the counseling in place to help students make better decisions. And so I strongly urge you to provide us the help we need before more teachers and staff leave, they're leaving, not coming. And look to our veteran teachers for ideas on what to do immediately to address these problems, thank you.
Thank you, the next person is Dr. Thompson.
Good evening to the citizens of the city of Richmond, the voters of the city of Richmond, School Board Chair Burke, School Board Vice Chair Young, Superintendent Cameras. Good evening. My name is Michael H. Thompson and I am here tonight to kindly lift up some concerns as it relates to the health, safety and wellness of our staff. Particularly our classroom teachers. We are very much still in the middle of a global health pandemic. Our classroom teachers show up to work every single day. They risk their lives, they risk their livelihoods for the academic achievement and advancement of our students, their parents, their families, their guardians. If they are exposed to COVID-19, whether that exposure occurs in the classroom or outside of the classroom, they should not have to deal with the difficulties that come with ensuring that they get paid. There are still some RPS staff members who don't show up to work every day because of working from home. There are members of the Virginia Department of Education staff members who don't show up to work every day because they work from home. Staff members, classroom teachers should be focused on teaching their students and not having to ensure they should still get paid if they're out for COVID. Whether that exposure occurs in a school building or outside of a school building. And one last thing, as a part of the staff login process, there is a Raptor technology system that staff must log in. They must answer questions related to COVID. Have you been exposed to COVID? Do you have any COVID symptoms? The symptoms are vomiting or sneezing or coughing.
Thirty seconds.
Or headache. I would kindly ask the board to be cautious of Richmond Public Schools reopening with love and the way that we treat people, particularly our classroom teachers, regardless of how COVID exposure may or may not have occurred. I thank you all for your service and thank you for your commitment to our community.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next item, next person, excuse me, Jennifer Van Arman. I hope I'm saying that correctly. Van Arman, excellent, thank you.
Okay, hey there everyone. I'm Jennifer Van Arman and I teach at Maymont Preschool. First, I'd like to say thanks for the Mental Health Week, that's a great start and helps us feel like you are hearing us. The week before our Mental Health Week, Maymont teachers got three days with a 30-minute planning period. And that's looking up from zero for sure. However, I'm here to urge you to support collective bargaining when you vote in December. As preschool teachers, our major issues this year are not close to being remedied. As for the three days with 30-minute planning times, I think we all certainly appreciate the step in the right direction. However, when we have an assessment that was due Friday, 10/29, the same week we had our first ever planning time, it shows we need to make everyone aware of a few more things that you most likely do not know about preschool teachers. The assessment that was due Friday, the 29th, was one of five assessments we are now required to give our students in the first two months of school. The assessment that was due, the gold, has 36 categories, those categories have 75 objectives. Keep in mind if a classroom has 15 students, that's 1,125 items in the checklist and 1,125 pieces of data that we are required to upload. We also have the PALS test, which has 1,800 items, the VKRP has 495. So for those three tests, that's a total of approximately 228 items per child for a total of 3,420 items that we must assess and put online. This is extremely difficult, as you can imagine, especially with virtually no downtime. Also, let's keep in mind that these little ones are beginning their school experience in the midst of a global pandemic and the major impacts this has had on their development. There are also two additional assessments, one is the ASQ, which has 39 questions per child for a total of 585. We will also have to give the Brigance an additional assessment that we thankfully did not get all the materials to conduct this year. Do we have any solutions, you may ask? Well goodness me, we actually do. And if preschool teachers would have been asked to give input prior to the changes this year, we could have avoided almost all of the issues. Preschool students need to go back to a six-hour day if we bring them. If we bring them in at 8:30 instead of 7:30, it would be a game changer for everyone, teachers, students and parents. Some of these babies get on the bus as early as 6:18, it's dark, it's getting colder, these little ones are exhausted. Please, let's have this conversation. This solution was proposed on 10/28 in a meeting with Dr. Epps in an attempt to solve some of our issues of this school year. This is the only viable solution.
Thank you, I'm down here on my knees because the cable is disconnected, I didn't know that, I just received a notice. So it's right up under my feet, so I'm trying to put it back together. Thank you so much, it's taped down. Do we have any tape, we can put it right over top of this, I won't pick it up. Or you're gonna slide my seat down, I'll slide over. Thank you, I'll slide over. No problem, thank you. All right, the next person on the list, please, we don't have you signed in, but go right ahead and speak, I hope you have, Dr. Ms. Lucas.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Cameras. My name is Candace Lucas, I'm here on behalf of Advocates for Justice and I'm specifically addressing the issue of where is RPS's dyslexia advisor? We have been told that the dyslexia advisor is for different people. When I look on the internet site for RPS, there is no one listed as a dyslexia advisor. Under oath, Renisha Parks, the Director of Special Education, indicated that the dyslexia advisor was hired in June of 2021. However, during the same due process hearing in which Harold Chaimless suborned perjury, okay, Nicole Thompson did, it was documented that Ms. Landry is the dyslexia advisor and Ms. Landry testified under oath that she had never worked with children with dyslexia. Help me understand that. It's been a while, I haven't been here in a while, but I had the opportunity to tour the world, go to places like Rwanda and I saw the importance of literacy and how literacy is liberation and how the fact that Richmond City Public Schools is not teaching literacy with explicitness, with directness, that is unjust and that is oppression. We understand that children from pre-K to 3 learn to read and from third grade on, they read to learn. In Richmond City, we can't even get past the read to learn. And that's our fault. You guys are getting money, Jason, for this. I have a fifth grade child who has dyslexia, who attended Patrick Henry, Liz. You were supposed to have a meeting with us to help this child who was reading at a fifth grade level, who was at a fifth grade level, reading at a first grade level and you never got back to us despite the parents' pleas. She had to remove her child from Richmond Public Schools and send him to new community because you guys wouldn't even acknowledge that he had dyslexia. How is this just? How is this liberation? Literacy is liberation. We don't have it here and you're paying Harold Chaimless to cover up and rape our children of their right to literacy with our tax dollars.
Ms. Lucas, please excuse me. However, when we call names out in that manner, because we're on the board, we cannot respond, but
I don't want you to respond, I just want you to listen.
I know, and we are listening, you know.
Okay.
When we call names out and we put labels and attachments.
But this is my public comment, you're taking up my time.
I'm not taking away your right to speak.
But I'm gonna call people out because it's factual, it's factual. And to be perfectly honest, if you are more concerned about our child that has anxiety because he can't read than these adults' feelings, I wouldn't even be here.
Well, I'll share.
Okay, and you know I was, but y'all knew I was coming. I sent four and five emails, Jason, you didn't even respond. I asked who was the dyslexia specialist. Nobody can tell me. And the parents have a right to know, we pay your salaries, not you. You answer to us. I am outraged that Renisha lied. I am outraged that Nicole lied.
Ms. Lucas.
I am outraged that they lied under oath.
Ms. Lucas, right now, we will gladly address and I'm sorry to hear all of this part, I really am. And we're gonna work it through, thank you for bringing it to our attention, you are a strong advocate for children.
Why aren't y'all?
Excuse me?
Why aren't y'all? Why aren't you? It's not okay not to have a dyslexia advisor when our children have dyslexia, Jason. It's not okay.
We may need to get security, please.
Oh, you're gonna get security on me?
It's almost time up, but so far as calling people names out in that manner, not.
Oh, no, 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 no. Everyone needs to be accountable for the fact that you don't respond to emails. I did it your way and it didn't work. I did it your way and it didn't work. You, your board, the people that you hired lied under oath. I sent you the information and you ignored it. The attorneys that you guys hired with our taxpaying dollars suborned perjury and you guys didn't do anything on a child. I gave you the opportunity, I met with Liz, I told Liz, let's meet with the principal. She said we're going to meet with the principal and she did not. And nobody better come near me, because this will end up on the news and you know how it rolls. No, nobody better come near me. I'm exerting my First Amendment rights, I went to Liz, I went to Jason, I went to Tracy, I went to Renisha on behalf of this family. And just because you don't like the fact that I'm escalating this matter, it doesn't matter.
I understand, I understand.
Treat our children with dignity. Literacy is liberation.
Exactly, thank you, Ms. Lucas, thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much, next person? Thank you so much. Next person?
Hey, good evening. My name is Anne Forrester, and I'm an RPS teacher and a statistic resident. I was disheartened to find out this morning that yet another of my coworkers has quit. I believe that now there are 12 teachers who've resigned at my school just this school year, and that's not even counting support staff, who I know are equally short-staffed and overworked. By the way, this may reflect on my school's administration. This isn't any one person's fault that staff turnover is the way it is. Instead, the system has set us up to fail. It sets us up to fail when it rezoned what was once two schools into one without getting meaningful input from the staff, students, families that are directly affected by these changes. It set us up to fail when we opened with considerable staff vacancies, and it sets us up to fail when brand-new teachers are hired but not supported because the mentors that are supposed to support them are so overwhelmed with existing responsibilities. And I say that as an existing mentor with two mentees. I haven't been trained at all in how to be a mentor. I'm not paid to be a mentor, and I really don't feel like I'm doing justice for what the new teachers that are under me deserve. Although the two days off last week were much needed and much appreciated, we've returned to the same conditions that we left a week ago. We need proactive, not reactive, decision-making. Any of the following changes would have a positive effect on staff and student morale. Shortening the day by one hour. Creating Wednesday half-days for students like we had during the virtual school year. Asynchronous days for students from time to time so that staff can catch up on things. Compensating staff that miss-planning to cover classes where there are no subs with either money or, you know, reallocating that time somehow. And to alleviate the childcare issues that I know any of these schedule changes would create, RPS could use funding from the American Rescue Plan and other pandemic-related funding from the federal government to extend and build upon our existing extended-day programs for students. However, the board has delayed the two most pressing systemic changes we can make: collective bargaining and the construction of Georgewith High School. Public testimony around both of these issues has been clear and overwhelming. If the board takes the situation in our school seriously, then they should pass a strong collective bargaining resolution, like the one already written, and collaborate with the city on Georgewith High School. Anything else is politics for personal gain and not what the staff, parents, students, and constituents are demanding. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. That ends our public information. All right, we can move along with our agenda. Again, we thank everyone for... Excuse me? Thank you. Technology issue?
Thank you, Ms. D. Young.
All right, we're ready to move along with our agenda. Are we straight yet? Is still working on it, Ms. White? Let me turn that microphone off. After we figure out public information and...
What's the issue? You can move on without it being on screen.
We're in public. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is Dreams for RPS update. And when we get to the part of discussion, please, colleagues, be mindful that Mr. Young will let me know who's in line to speak. All right. Thank you, Ms. Epp, Dr. Epp. All right, for your information, they're trying, they're having to reboot, but we will continue moving on since it's a public meeting. Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I just need to pull up the presentation on my computer. I too am having connectivity issues. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent and School Board members. I would like to present the current results aligned to Goal Three around academic proficiency. At the beginning of this school year, the Virginia Department of Education mandated a new assessment called the Virginia Growth Assessment. This is administered throughout late September and early October, and it assesses students' knowledge of the prior-year standards in grades three through eight. We've replaced other previous assessments that we use, such as math. So while this was added, we took away one assessment. Just to give an overview, we call this the VGA. And again, the VGA is meant to really focus on identifying student areas for growth going into the school year with a particular emphasis on mastery of the prior-grade-level standards and readiness for the current-grade-level standards. We, this is administered once this year, and then the SOL will be administered in the spring. This data will be used as a baseline for student growth. Note, if students took the SOL last spring, as you recall, not all of our students did, but if students took the SOL, they can, either the SOL spring baseline or the fall VGA could be used as a baseline for student growth. And the headline here is, as we suspected, the data from our VGA tells us what we were very concerned about in terms of the impact of COVID on our students' academic proficiency. And we know that our students, and this is confirmed by the data, have been deeply impacted in many ways and for purposes of tonight's presentation academically. To give you an overview of overall proficiency for our division, we are at 35% according to the VGA. There is, if you have the slide deck in front of you, you'll see that there's consistent gaps across our subgroups. But still, with the exception of white students, you can see every subgroup really fared poorly coming out of the pandemic in terms of academic readiness. That was for reading. For math, we saw an even greater decline. And, you know, this is consistent with the statewide SOL results from the spring as well. But just 10% of our students were considered proficient in math on the VGA. And again, you can see the consistency across all subgroups except for white students. To see the breakdown for proficiency by, for reading by grade level, again, we shared earlier this year that we know we have a literacy crisis, and we have to really focus on that with our students. You'll see that our third graders in particular are significantly at risk of not ending third-grade reading on grade level. This means just 18% of our third graders came into third grade having mastered second-grade content for reading. And for math, the results are even more dire for proficient, grade-level proficiency, which is 3% for third grade and just 4% for eighth grade. So these bookends are deeply, deeply concerning. I won't go through all the breakdown by cluster. You can certainly see some bright spots across certain schools. But again, for elementary in particular, we are deeply concerned about these results. I think for what this means for us is what has been our strategy going into the school year, which is to double down on academic supports for students, continue to invest in our literacy work, continue to invest in our intervention blocks. One of the reasons we changed the elementary school schedule was to make time for dedicated intervention blocks or personalized learning for each group of students. As you know, we've invested in extended-day efforts at the elementary level. And so as we look at this data, just continuing to focus on the things we've established as priorities to meet our students' needs coming out of the pandemic. Happy to take any questions.
Ms. Gibson, followed by Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's, I'd like to hear more about our students with special needs. I think that what's glaring in the document is that of every subgroup, our students with special needs are faring the worst. And you know, I have expressed concern about the way that we have, whether the fund application is really going to where the problem is in the way that we need as it pertains to literacy. I, you know, see that, we've talked a bit about extended day, but there's no way we're able to ensure that the students that are going to this extended-day program are the students that need the additional support. And because those extended-day programs are not consistently staffed by licensed teachers, you know, that gives me significant pause. But I would like to hear specifically in the way that we're using funding today, right now, where are the dollars going for special education, specifically to support our special education students? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. To answer your question, the annual, Special Education Annual Plan that you all approve every spring outlines where the lion's share of those dollars go. The lion's share of those dollars go to personnel who directly support students with disabilities. We, I can re-pull up the application, but by and large, it is for personnel, teachers, specific teachers in the building, additional staff, additional dedicated instructional assistance. That's for our our federal IDA funds. For our local operating funds, we also do have a sizable budget for exceptional ed. And that includes payment to, for students who have been placed. Private-day tuition is one of our larger expenses as well as the expense of one-to-one student aides, although we've been working with families as appropriate to reevaluate whether that is needed. So happy to go into more detail, but those are some of the larger line items in our exceptional education budget.
Thank you. So I'm aware of, you know, that we approved Title I funding and such in the spring, but I'm specifically asking about the CARES Act funding and how those dollars, we got $120 million. How are those dollars supporting our special-needs students? And I actually would also appreciate an update regarding the dyslexia advisor. This is a requirement by law. And you know, I mean, all of the things that we're hearing, I mean, it's overwhelming. You know, we're talking about literacy, but then we also are hearing that we don't even have students that are getting to school in time. So all of these things are related, but as it pertains to the dyslexia advisor and specifically supporting students in the schools and how we're using, we got $120 million. And I want to feel assured that we are really putting that money to use in the right way.
Shall I? Well, first, the dyslexia, we do have a dedicated dyslexia point person. So I'm happy to follow up and discuss that in more detail, but what you heard is not accurate. First. Second, our core literacy strategy, particularly in K-2, and especially with our curriculum adoption, addresses some of the concerns that were raised around literacy, which is around explicit instruction and early literacy through our phonics program, which, prior to this curriculum, was not required in RPS schools nor adopted prior to this administration. In terms of the CARES Act dollars, when we have, we, I cannot speak to all 120 million. 60 million of that we presented around academic achievement and literacy, including any student who has needs. That includes all students with disabilities if they have a learning need in literacy or in math. So those students are incorporated into the lion's share of that work. As a reminder to the board, students with an IEP inherently have individualized needs. So it's hard for me to make a universal strategy statement in terms of those dollars. So happy to take, you know, we can revisit the ARP funding. The ARP funding actually hasn't come in yet. But per our plan, it includes a literacy focus that includes students with disabilities.
One moment, please. Ms. White, you have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Epp, I have a couple of questions. Looking at your graph, and I've seen this before, it just seems like it's sort of redundant because I'm looking at it, and most of all the Title I schools are below 35, 40%. And I heard that you said that reading the most proficiency, as I'm looking at this, 75% is white. And looking at the Title I schools and the strategy, what are the same strategy put in all schools? That's one of my questions, because if these schools can get 65 and 70%, and they're tied to two schools, and all the Title I schools is below 30%, why isn't the same strategy, strategy used in all the schools? Something is not, can you explain that? Something is just not right when I'm looking at this bar graph. And I'm thinking that we, as a board, looking at this, we might need to review these curriculums, the Eureka and the ELA. Some things that I'm seeing, and we may need to, because our kids, I viewed it myself with my own eyes, they are tired in the morning, our small children, and this bell schedule may need to be changed. So can you just elaborate on what strategies did these Title II schools use that these Title I's didn't?
Thank you, Ms. White. So most of our schools are designated Title I. most of our schools are designated Title I. The other title grants are not school-specific, they're division-wide. The and I would say our core academic strategy is consistent. It's one of the reasons we felt it very important to adopt a K eight-aligned curricula with a very clear progression of learning. I want to remind the board that our students missed almost an entire quarter of instruction in the 1819 school year, and our school closed on March 13th. And there was no requirement for instruction from March 13th until the following September. I also want to remind the board that our students were 100% virtual in the past year. And while we know that some students may have not regressed as much, I think we are very clearly seeing the impact of COVID and the pandemic on our students, particularly our students who need the most, our students who face the most challenges by nature of their socioeconomic status. And that is not, while it's incredibly upsetting, it should not be news. We've talked about this, which is why we have planned to make this investment in literacy. I think it would be premature to, remember, this is beginning of year data just this year, and this is the first time the state has administered this assessment. This assessment was created in less than six months. So I would be cautious to make sweeping strategic changes. Rather, I do think this, if anything, tells us we have to double down on instruction and all of the factors that impact instruction and really ensure that we are focused on academics and supporting our students' socio-emotional needs so they can show up to learn. That is what this data tells me. I hope that helps.
Can I get a follow-up moment? So what you're telling me, I'm not sure if you answered my question. I'm asking you, what strategies are these other schools using that is not in these Title I schools? Because I keep hearing you saying social and emotional. I'm getting a little, everybody's saying social and emotional, but I don't see anything happen socio-emotional in the schools when it comes to the academic reading and writing. Yes, I'm aware of the virtue of learning that you had in the summer, because I have two children of my own in RPS. But I saw a whole lot of books of Eureka that the teachers were trying to understand as well as the children. I I have loads of Eureka books, but they were never test touched. So if I had that same, that same problem at my house, what did the other children have? How did they learn? I'm just, I I'm really, I really think that this curriculum needs to be re-looked at, both of them.
I would remind.
To give us basic, give our children basic, the basic skills that they need. Because they're doing a lot of testing right now. Every time I go to a school, they're testing, they're testing. We already know that they are learning loss, but what strategy are we doing to get them to where they need to get?
Thank you, Mrs. White. I want to make a few points. Number one, what you are seeing in this data and the disparity between some schools and others, quite frankly, is a reflection of family income level. Where we see a higher income level, we know nationally outcomes tend to be higher because students have more advantages than students from lower income backgrounds. That is a fact in Richmond, it's a fact in Chicago, Atlanta, LA, and all across America. It's a tragic fact, and it's why we all do the work that we do here in Richmond to upend that reality. What happened during the pandemic is all of the pre-existing inequities and injustices that advantaged kids from higher-income families and disadvantaged kids from lower-income families got worse at both ends of the spectrum. And so families of a higher income background were able to provide supports during the virtual year, during the spring when we were closed, during the summer, that lower-income families, through no fault of their own, were not able to provide. And so what we are seeing now is a reflection of those pre-existing inequities. That said, I believe firmly in the curricular choices that we have made and in the instructional program that we have outlined, these are some of the best researched equity-focused approaches to instruction that I have experienced in over 25 years in education. They are explicitly designed to provide the kind of instruction that we know based on research works. Prior to these curricula, we had almost none of the five core elements of reading instruction as indicated by the National Reading Panel several years ago. That has been corrected. But I want to be clear, it is going to take us years to climb out of the effects of the pandemic. We were already facing an uphill battle, one that I continue to believe we can overcome with time, focus, determination, and most of all, the belief in our students' ability to make that progress. But it should be no surprise to anyone that the pandemic was deeply devastating, and we made a very difficult choice to close because we collectively put the health and safety of our children and staff first, and I stand by that decision. But in doing so, we know we also were not able to provide as robust an instructional program as an in-person program. And these are the costs of that. I am confident we will see growth this year from these scores. But it is going to take us years to ultimately get back to where we were and then achieve the success that we all know our students can make if given the appropriate supports, the appropriate opportunities, and the necessary time.
I wanted to add one, thank you, Mr. Cameras. I wanted to add one anecdote. Prior to the COVID closure, when we reviewed the mid-year MAP data from the 1819 school year, there was significant improvement in math, and we've seen significant improvement in math across the board since that curricula. So I think seeing the delta really shows what impact COVID had on math, because we were headed in the right direction with the current curricula.
Ms. White, you good? All right, Ms. Page, and then Mrs. Who's next? Mrs. Rizzi or Ms.?
Ms. Jones, then Ms. Rizzi. Thank you. Ms. Page?
First, I would like to say thank you Superintendent Cameras for your comments, because you hit it right on the head. This pandemic highlighted many of the disparities locally, here, statewide, all over the country. But it is concerning that you know, that your white subgroup is significantly higher than our other subgroups, and yes, historically, there's been an issue. So my question, the strategies. And I and I recognize that, yes, it's going to take us some time because the pandemic set us back I don't know how many years, but so the data that we are seeing now, would you categorize this as our baseline data?
From the effects of COVID, yes.
Okay, so based on that, should we see or receive updates, say quarterly, to see a pattern, you know, a growth pattern in all of our schools? Because we need to keep our own enterprise. And the board, we need to see improvements. And I'm thinking quarterly, because if we have made this investment on literacy, we should start seeing a return on our investment. So again, I'm suggesting a quarterly update. So so we can see growth, and if we're not, do we need to make any adjustments or make changes? Because if we're not seeing any growth, then something is not working.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Ms. Page, are you done?
Yes, I am. Thank you. This is Jones, then Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Epps, for your presentation. I don't have a question. I have more of a suggestion and a comment. Similar to Mrs. Page's point, is there a way that we can receive information because I do agree that we hear a lot about, we've made this investment, we've invested in, but there aren't any specifics that are being shown. And so like, I am an SEL person, right? But if I see this data, how do I know what SEL strategies are connecting so that I know that they're working or they're like in tandem? So instead of maybe just data, maybe also incorporating some of the actual action items that are maybe cooperating with what, you know, you initially presented. And I what I'm thinking of is when you mentioned extended day, like, so what does that entail? Like, just going a little bit deeper, because it does just sound like, okay, yes, we've made this investment, but if all we're hearing is it's not producing the results, of course, right now, and we are aware that this is prior data, so we know that it's going to move up. But I do think that we need a little bit more information that we can compare and contrast for, it's almost like when you came with the presentation, you had already had the strategies. So how do we know that they're working? I think that would be helpful going forward, and however you choose to present it would be good. And I think yeah, that that was pretty much it. Just a little bit more information that really aligns with here's the numbers, these are the steps that we're taking, and then here are the outcomes.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Jones. And I want to ensure when I'm speaking about our strategy, the lot, there have been a number of things that we've begun, but there are also a number of things that have not started that cannot start until our ARP funding comes all the way through. And we are still very early in the school year. So I also want to make it clear that, one, this is baseline data that doesn't reflect, you know, progress. However, it also doesn't, we're not at a point where we've used every, you know, arrow in our quiver, if you will. So we are ju, like, this is the first year we are implementing our ELA curriculum, really imperfect, it was virtual last year. So this is really the first full year. And as educators know, anytime the first full year, there's a big learning curve. So there's a number of things that are underway, but I also want to be clear that we are still very much in a, you know, launching phase, given the timing of the school year. We will certainly continue to keep our foot on the gas and certainly provide quarterly updates and our reflections and thoughts on what we think is working, what we think needs to be reconfigured, et cetera.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. And then I'm next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Epps, for the presentation. You know, I I have to express that I'm growing really tired of this deficit model that we all use to speak of our kids. I can imagine how tired they might be, being constantly told that they're behind that, you know, COVID has taken from them something that perhaps they won't, will have to struggle for years to get back. I think it's a very kind of depressing way to frame this, and I'd like to see us talk a little more differently about our children. Since we are evidently, since this chart really shows that the problem primarily, or if we want to call it a problem, I'm not convinced it is, is affecting our lower-income families. Yet, when there was a list of engagement points given just a few minutes ago, I did not hear anything about engaging our families in this process. And I think too often we speak of our our marginalized communities as though they have no voice, or we know what's better for them, and I don't know that I've heard enough people from this group speaking for the needs of their kids. I think my colleagues, I know at least three of them, have asked specifically what you are doing, and it seems that that gets danced around. And I would like to know specifically what you are doing, because I have heard cases of times when Parks and Rec instructors have served as teachers for after-care programs, and that really concerns me. So I do want more details about what is happening. I have a few questions about data points I think are missing. One question I have is if students took the SOL in the spring, could they have opted out of the VGA? Since you said you would take one or the other. I don't see anything on here indicating the number of students at each school that took the assessment. I think that would be helpful to see. And I'd like to see an update on the literacy interventions you've done so far and to see if there are any results. I'd like to see this framed more positively. I I do not want our students or our families feeling bad about this. This should be a case of celebration. We've got this money. We should be celebrating some kind of achievement at this point, I think. And I also don't know when the students took this test. I don't see that on the slides.
Madam Chair, I want to share. I I do want to just make one clarification. Dr. Epps did say this, but I'm not sure it was somewhat in passing. We have not yet received a dime of the latest round of federal funding, the Biden stimulus package, not a dime. So that is still in the approval process. So everything we're doing is on existing funding, existing resources. There is a lot in there to provide additional support targeted at the students who need it the most. But again, we have not received a dime of that funding yet, so we will not see the returns on that incredible resource for frankly, months. I I'm not sure yet when we will get those funds. And so I do want to just make sure that that was clear.
Thank you so very much. I would just like to make that. Were you done?
I I think I had one more thing. Oh, yeah. I've heard, I'm, thank you, Madam Chair for asking. I've heard some about like English language learners struggling with these tests and then being told, oh, we have to get a baseline. And you know that a baseline for an English language learner is not going to be accurate because they don't, unless they are testing. And you know that a baseline for an English language learner is not going to be accurate because they don't, unless they are testing, are they testing in Spanish?
No, not for VGA.
Okay, so then the baseline could be skewed really low with a very intelligent student because of the language issue. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that is something I've heard that I'd, I'd like to see addressed at some point.
So, um, first, just to answer a couple of your quick questions. This was given in late September through mid-October. All students in grades three through eight from the state are required to take it. Like any state mandated assessment, families can opt out. When I presented the SOL results this board, you all know that they were very small numbers in terms of participation. Knowing how important growth is. We worked with our schools and students to ensure that everyone participated fully. So our participation rates on this assessment are quite high. I'm happy to provide that in our next update. I want to be clear. I do not make the state assessment rules. I agree with you. A, a level-one English learner should, taking an assessment in a language they do not know, probably not very helpful. That's not my call. I think we can certainly, uh, consider that against our schools that have a higher population but, of English learners, but that is not the whole story. I appreciate your comments on positive framing, and I want to be clear. This is not about making our students feel bad. As adults. In the system and leading and working in the system, we as a community. As a school community, need to take this on us with our teachers and our families and our staff as a problem to address. But this is in no means. A reflection of our students and what they are capable of. And so I wholeheartedly agree with you. And in terms of what we are doing, I am not in any way intending to dance around specifics. I'm happy to spend the next hour outlining our comprehensive academic strategy, if that's helpful to the board. But a few things we've done, we extended summer school. We had a longer summer school, and we quadrupled the number of students receiving summer school this year. We launched, adopted a comprehensive curricula in ELA that reflects the National Reading Panel's research on the key components of literacy instruction. We launched a literacy institute where we trained 200 elementary staff members in the science of reading. We launched a comprehensive. Extended day effort that still needs much, much work. And I agree that. I wish we didn't have the operational limitations that come with the economy that we're in right now, so that we could have more students. And to Mr. Camus's point, as soon as our funding is available, we are ready to hit go on a number of other pieces of our strategy that we laid out in our presentation. You all know that I'm passionate about instruction. I'd be happy to sit down and talk more deeply. Also happy to make a more, uh, granular presentation for the board in terms of our instructional strategy, um, as it relates to. This data and moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Epps. If, were you done?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Jones, is your hand up? But, okay, no, I'm going next. I'm going next. All right, um, number one, thank you so very much for sharing this data this evening, and I want us to be mindful that this was given, as you stated, the first couple of weeks of school. When the VDOE stated that we had to have this assessment, I originally was not in favor of it, because there's enough tests going on, been there, done it. But after going to the schools, visiting and meeting with teachers and principals, I see now that we have no other choice but to move up. It goes to show, unfortunately, virtual did not work for all of our students. Okay, we know that for a fact, because some turned it off, some continued. There were so many other challenges, including broadband and whatever else. So I want us to be mindful of those children, students who are now under the virtual umbrella, because they count as our students. And we're keeping an extra eye on them. All right? That we're very mindful of them following through. I agree with what Ms. Paige stated. In regards to quarterly or whatever, bringing something back, but we haven't been in school nine months yet, excuse me, nine weeks yet. We've not reached three, four months yet. So if they came back with scores in the seventies and eighties through virtual, that would really be a big red flag. Just think about it. So they need us. And I have complete faith that our teachers, our instructional staff persons, the folks are working very hard. Schools I have visited, they have shown to be the data rooms and how each student's code is listed, where they were, where they are. If they're red, if they're green, if they're yellow, or yellow in between, in terms of moving forward. It breaks my heart to see a 1%. That's, 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 so we have no other choice but to move up. But what I want to make sure is that there is a, a, a line there per se as to what's expected. From school to school, it doesn't matter if you're in what side of town. At the end of the day, every child should have the opportunity to be successful. So I, my, my concern is, number one, if teachers have all the materials they're supposed to have. Number two. Are they comfortable in utilizing the materials that they have? Number three, excuse me, please, 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 don't disrespect me like that, please. I'm sorry. It's my time. Number three, third item is to make sure that our students, this afternoon, in visiting a school in the seventh district. There was an after-school program going on, and talking to the principal, all of the students were not engaged in after-school. However, a program took place in the recreational area of, of Fairfield Court Elementary School. An after-school STEM program that just started. So those parents who don't have their children in the schools program. Started as of today through HUD, a partnership that we have. They're going to start there, but under the parents, by being in, in public housing, they can be a part of this program. So that also goes back to community persons getting involved. So I do hope that our. I did read that someplace that our community persons, our engagement offices are engaged. I hope our ambassadors to the city is, is still engaged. But we have no other choice. If they came, if you came in here tonight and had that, showing 50, 60, 70%, I mean, some, they don't need us.
Hmm.
So the data shows that our children do need us. We need our teachers, our instructional staff persons, we need the bus drivers, we need the whole gamut of folks coming together to make sure our children are excelling. Talked to a bus driver, um, daughter this past week, the bus driver apparently gives each child, as they get to the bus, some type of little card or treat, rewards or whatever. So those are the type of things that lift our children up as well. So moving forward, yes, I want the data, but I don't want to teach, test our children until that's all they're doing. And that, I've been there, that can happen. So as we bring back quarterly data, it doesn't have to be anything extensive. You know, you can have three questions or two questions and determine if those SOLs have been mastered. But I hope that everybody here understands that. I'm speaking to my board colleagues to give. Our teachers and our schools a chance. Give us a chance. Give us a chance. I have complete faith. Because people are working hard and not committed, and we all are tired. But sometimes you just, you know, you don't get burnt out if you haven't warmed up yet. So let's move forward. Thank you for your report. Ms. Paige?
Thank you. So my next question. When will the support start for our middle and high school? For extended day or pullouts after school? Supports, academic supports?
Our, thank you, Ms. Paige. Our, our middle schools, so historically. It's been variable, the different programming at our secondary schools for extended day. We are beginning to lean more into centrally coordinating, or at least ensuring equity across that, but our focus this year has been on elementary. Most of our, all of our middle schools have some form of out-of-school time programming. But, uh, that's done by, you know, a different partners or, uh, legacy programming. That is currently underway across our middle schools and our high schools, many of which have, you know, earned 21st century grants. Or schools are using their school-specific Title I dollars. Um, typically, and our plan would continue, in the second semester for secondary, we would have, uh, you might have heard of in the past, we've done something called a Dreamers Academy. Or kind of a summer, a spring, uh, I don't like to call it SOL Academy, because to me, it's not, it's about the academic proficiency. But some version of, um, targeted extended services that are academically focused for secondary students in the spring. That doesn't mean it's not happening now in our secondary schools. It's just, um, it's more site-based and site-specific. I can provide a summary of the different programmings. Um, but that's coordinated more traditionally, again, at the site level with partners directly.
So follow-up question. I think that information will be important for our secondary schools, because if we have supports. At. One or two schools and not at. Other schools. Then there again, it shows disparity.
Mm-hmm.
So if we have supports at school A and B. We should have supports. In place for all of our secondary schools. So, you know, if it started now and some, you say it's site-based, but. I guess a, um. Organized plan is supposed to start in January, I mean, second semester.
Yes, ma'am.
So again, I think it's important that we have the information. If there are some supports that have already started in our secondary schools.
Yes. I can provide that.
Yeah, we need to make sure that those supports have started in all of our schools, not just some of our schools.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm adamant about that. Because I don't want to see the support. At Hill and it's not at Bushell. That's a problem.
Agreed.
So, yeah, I would like, I think it's important that we receive that information.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paige. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this, this agenda item has received a lot of feedback from my colleagues. And I, I hope the administration appreciates that the questions are coming from, um, an incredible concern. Um, and so, uh, while I know that these questions may be difficult to answer, I, I ask that the administration, um, respect the, uh, you know, where, at least, you know, we're coming from as, as board members. This is what we were elected to do to ask these questions. Um, and, you know, as a parent, uh, like my colleague Ms. White, I have a stack of empty workbooks at home. You know, and, and as a board member, I know we spent millions of dollars on these, these workbooks, and they're empty, and I know that I'm not alone. I can only imagine that we have tens of thousands of empty workbooks. And so when I ask, are we using the money from that, from, in the best way? I, I think about those empty workbooks. Um, and it's a valid question. And it's not just this board that's asking the question, it's also the VDOE. We received a letter in July from the VDOE, and they specifically highlighted their concern with the curriculum. In fact, one of the essential, um, one of the, uh, essential action items was for this district to come up with a plan. And so we have to be accountable to the fact that we made choices, we purchased this curriculum in the midst of a pandemic. And there were, there was an impact to that. And we can only blame but so much on the pandemic. We have to take certain amount of accountability ourselves in order to make change, and that's what I would really like to see happen. Um, I, I also want to point out kind of an aside comment that we got in this agenda item, which was about the federal funding. I am aghast. I'm aghast that we are now being told, as an aside, that we have not received over the, the hundreds of millions of dollars that we were promised, and we're moving forward with programs that are reliant on that funding, right? And then we're being told from teachers that they're not getting paid. Now I know why. I would like to make a comment. We have been delayed in getting a financial report from the administration for months. There is now a financial report in our agenda item, or, you know, in our, but it's under other informational items. So nobody was even planning on giving us this update, as far as I can tell. So I ask an emergency discussion about what's going on with the money. What's going on with the money? And I do believe we should assess how we are spending these federal dollars immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Anyone else? Ms. Jones? And then we should be ready to move forward. I'm glad we're having a robust discussion as well regarding curriculum. This is what it's all about. This is the heart of the teaching and learning process. Ms. Jones? He said, Mrs. Liz Duer.
Thank you. I think, um, I think the, the board is frustrated by this. I'm sure the public is frustrated by this. I hear your frustration as well. So I think, um, rather than it be the board versus the administration or versus anyone, like, I think we're all in this together, figuring out how to solve this, so. Um, and I deeply respect some of the questions here. I also know that you are, this is your top priority. And so I want to thank you for the work that you're doing on the ground. I think sometimes when we see data without sort of being reminded of all the good work, because we come together every two weeks, we don't, you know, we don't eat, breathe, and sleep it. So I think one of the things that we've learned here tonight is just, um, you know, potentially just attaching the literacy plan that we approved, the plan that we approved for the ARP, the plan that we approved for the Biden stimulus, so that we can make sure that we're reviewing that. And I do like my colleagues' suggestions, um, regarding visiting this quarterly, making sure that we're actually understanding the timeline of when things are being implemented and how things are going. You know, we've had some, we were sort of talking about some of this in piecemeal, like, we talked about the aftercare, and then we're talking about this, right? So I think maybe if we do have a quarterly meeting that is just focused on, um, not just reviewing the data, but, but an update on what we're doing, I think, um, that might be helpful context for all of us. And what things we need to change around, et cetera. Um, one of, um, uh, one of the things that I wanted to ask, um, is, or two things that I wanted to ask is, this is a new metric, so this is not currently a part of our RPS dashboard. Um, but I'm assuming it will become part of our RPS dashboard. And to that end, has, um, our, have our partners at UVA reviewed the methodology for reporting this? Or does it matter, because it just comes straight from the state? Um, but I know that there's some nuance that some of my peers even pointed out about, um, baseline data, et cetera. And then secondarily, kind of responding to, um, some of the public comment about assessments. Um, maybe not tonight, but it would be helpful to understand, um, what's going on with assessments, because now this is another, yet another assessment. And I, it's my understanding that I think a lot of these assessments are out of our control. But, um, if there are assessments that are in our, within our control, maybe we need to relook at that, because this is yet another thing that, um, is being asked of us.
Thank you. Sounds like we need a spreadsheet or something that we can see, goes back to what Ms. White was asking as well. So, which will include the strategies. It can be done easily. Because you've given us a strong list of things that are in place, but we need to see it. That's, that's, that's what, what I'm here.
I can do that.
So we can work on that.
I couldn't answer your quick question about the data for the dashboard, Ms. Duer. Uh, this actually wouldn't be a metric that as a tech, this is more of a indicator, a leading indicator, if you will. But really, um, this really is truly a diagnostic. So we wouldn't be including this in a dashboard to, um. Treat as something, a goal, our goal is still academic proficiency as measured by ultimately the SOL proficiency, which this is aligned to. Um, but this wouldn't be a separate metric in and of itself. Um, and the benefit of this growth measure. Uh, is students, uh, for purposes of, um. Schools and students can demonstrate growth pretty clearly. So it's not, even if a student falls short of proficiency on the SOL in the spring. There, if they make enough growth, uh, that counts as sort of sufficient growth, if you will. That a school sort of gets acknowledged for that growth in a positive way. Um, but this wouldn't be a separate metric in and of itself.
Thank you, Mrs. Paige.
This is more of a question, so Superintendent Camus. Clarification. So curriculum and new programs. Anything that we do, it has to be approved by the Virginia Department of Education.
Yes.
One minute.
So I just wanted to make that clear. So. Curriculum, programs, everything has been, was vetted by Virginia Department of Education.
We adopted the curriculum in line with our MOU.
We can't post a job description for hire without the VDOE's sign-off.
I, I just wanted to make that, that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paige. Mr. Yang?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't intending to weigh in, but perhaps I should, uh, briefly, uh, impart, because yours truly voted not once, not twice, but three times to afford our teachers and our students and families. The opportunity, if they so chose, to re- the opportunity, if they so chose, to resume in-person instruction. I respectfully, first, I want to acknowledge outstanding work being done by the administration and by our teachers. But I am at a loss respectfully how anyone knowing what we know now can defend keeping our school buildings closed for a year and a half. I'll add, I'll never forget the conversation as at a residence at their doors doorstep last year, 2020. And it was a mom, it was off Evans Way, not terribly far from Fisher Elementary. And she said, said to me something like, you know, Jonathan, I've lived here in the city for a long time. And though I could reside just a few blocks to the west and pay less than taxes. I, and though I, on balance, received, this is the mom sharing with me at her doorstep, the unbalanced received lesson services. Thought here was that time, here was that moment. I said surely of all the school districts in the region, surely, given, and this is her speaking, do my best to recite what happened. She said surely in Richmond Public Schools, given that we have a disproportionate share of students that arguably need additional support, surely RPS would provide those families that so chose the opportunity to attend school in person. But that didn't happen. And here we are. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Young. No more discussion. Dr. F, we thank you so very much. And I'm so delighted this was the first list on the agenda. As I stated early earlier, this is what we should be about. So I'm glad we had a robust conversation and look forward to many more to come as we make sure our boys and girls, our students have the opportunity to excel. Thank you so much. All right, next item on our agenda is we're moving into section five, board action items. Five point zero one, personnel activities. Ms. Lee, thank you.
Good evening. Tonight I bring forth the following personnel actions for your consideration. The nomination of thirty employees, the change of contract of twenty seven employees, the resignation of twenty nine employees, the furlough of one employee, the returning of leave of one employee, the retirement of two employees, the termination of one employee and the death of one employee. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Young has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Lee, thank you. The of the twenty nine resignations, are you able to speak to how many of those were prompted either fully or partly because of our COVID vaccine mandate?
Thank you, Mr. Young. The majority of the recent resignations have been due to the COVID vaccine mandate.
Are there any other questions? Any other questions? Ms. Page?
I move that we accept the personnel action as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Page, seconded by Ms. Jones to receive the personnel actions report as listed. Any questions, discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, we're ready to vote.
Ms. Doer.
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
Epstein.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
I'm working.
Repeat your vote on the personnel actions.
Yes.
Yes. No?
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Berg?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Next item, five point zero two, board travel and district activity requests. Do we have any, Madam Clerk?
There are none for this week.
Thank you so very much. We'll move forward to section six, administrative administration business. An operational update on COVID, transportation, food and staffing. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, on COVID through Friday, when we closed, we have had four hundred and ten positive cases. As has been the case since the start of the year, the overwhelming majority, nearly all of those cases occurred outside of school. I do want to note that now with the vaccine available to children as young as five years old, we strongly encourage families who are comfortable doing so to get their children vaccinated. As a reminder, vaccinated individuals do not need to quarantine if exposed. So that means a significant reduction in time out of school, even if exposed. I want to share that we have a vaccination event coming up at Fairfield Elementary School. And I'm going to pull up those, well, I will get those dates and share that shortly. We also have the Arthur Ashe Center where vaccines are available and we will be having an event at Cardinal Elementary as well. Switching to food, we are now at hot meals in all locations. We have received feedback on our corrective action plan and initial drafts of the IRFP. We are working on revisions and we'll send that back for approval to the VDOE. Our transportation vacancies continue to persist and continue to create significant challenges. And then finally, on the staffing front, we already noted, Ms. Lee, the additional vacancies by and large due to the vaccine mandate. We are at ninety-two percent in compliance at this point. Glad to take any questions.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I would move that Richmond Public Schools shall neither reduce pay nor terminate any teachers or staff for failing to submit their COVID vaccination status if said teachers or staff agree to weekly COVID testing provided by RPS. Any teacher, staff person that was subject to reduction in pay shall be reimbursed in full.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Young, seconded by Mrs. Gibson to test those persons that have not been vaccinated and to reimburse money as listed. Correct? Are you ready for the vote? Any questions, discussion?
Dr. Harris Mohammed has a question.
All right, Dr. Harris Mohammed. We're ready, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
She has a slight delay.
Well, while she's getting, getting up, is she on?
Yes.
Anything, new chair? We're ready for you. Yes.
Okay, my, can I ask my question?
Yes.
Okay, my question is, why are board members receiving emails from Human Resources to submit our vaccination status? I'm not understanding.
I can answer that.
Please.
Technically, the school board members are employees of the system for in essence, record-keeping purposes. That's why.
Trying to watch and listen, but there's a delay.
That that's why they receive emails, but but that is not required. Ms. Lee, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Dr. Harris Mohammed, thank you for that question. All board members' information is included in our ERP system, AS400. And the emails that board members received were auto-generated because AS400 and TalentEd, which is a system that we use to communicate with our staff, they were included in that, in those auto-generated emails.
Does she have another question? Ms. Dr. Harris Mohammed, do you have another question?
No, ma'am. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions on this, Mr. Camus, then Ms. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly am. It causes great pain to have to withhold pay and move forward with the progressive discipline process for the vaccine mandate. And so I certainly understand the motion on the table. And I also am acutely aware of the impact that the additional vacancies are having. I do want to note that our mandate increased our vaccination rate dramatically. And I believe has kept our schools and our kids safe. And I do believe that taking this step, while understandable, would would weaken that. One of the things I'm proud of that we have prioritized from the very start of this pandemic is health and safety above all else. And I do believe this mandate, ensuring that everybody who works with our children is vaccinated, is still the right approach to take. That said, I I certainly understand the concerns that we are currently facing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
I don't have a question.
Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question. I just heard most of the cameras say that, yes, the shot has kept our children safe. But I'm not understanding what that has to do with pay has to, taking someone's pay. How does that change? How does that help anyone taking someone's pay? That doesn't make them go and want to take a COVID shot. So the motion that was given was, I guess that's one of the alternative is to take someone's pay if they're not getting a shot. What what change, what does that does? Are you planning on continuing to do that or are you planning to terminate them sometime or another?
The motion that this body approved, I believe nearly unanimously indicated that failure to comply with the mandate would result in progressive discipline and ultimately loss of employment. And a mandate isn't a mandate if there are no consequences for not meeting the mandate. As much as I am pained by withholding pay and ultimately ending somebody's employment, I believe this body made that decision because we felt it was so critical that the staff in our buildings, working with our children, were fully vaccinated. Certainly, if the board feels otherwise at this point, that is, of course, the board's prerogative. I continue to maintain that doing everything we can to ensure all of our staff are vaccinated is a moral obligation that we have to our children.
Yes, I understand the mandate, but I just don't understand the 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 taking the money part from someone. Because that does not make them anymore willing to take a, to go and get a shot. It doesn't. And I don't, I don't, I'm not sure that we, you didn't put a time limit on how long? Because I believe I asked this question last, last board meeting. How long are you planning to just take money? You never answered that.
We want to be as measured as we possibly can, which is why after the deadline on October 1st, we gave an additional two weeks of grace for individuals to get vaccinated. Anyone who was not then vaccinated by October 15th, we notified would lose two days of pay. If individuals still do not get their vaccination, we would proceed with another two days of pay over the next several pay periods. I don't know how we would escalate just yet. We want, again, to be as measured as we possibly can. And again, I am pained by any loss of pay or any loss of employment. But this is the, this is the series of steps that this body adopted when they put forth the mandate. Again, I still believe it is our obligation to our children to do everything we can to make sure everybody is vaccinated.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do support the decision to put the mandate in place. But I I also feel like we don't get a plan on on how to, how to make it work. You know, we have a crisis with staff leaving. You know, more than one school in my district, there are teachers leaving in the middle of the year and it has nothing to do with the vaccination. And it has everything to do with the increased demands that they're facing in the classroom. And so this evening, as we are, you know, considering the twenty nine resignations, it's not just impacting those twenty nine teachers or staff members. There's a ripple effect because that workload is going to then be pushed back onto our staff in our schools. And so I'm not sure, there's a, there's no perfect solution. And I'm I'm sensitive to the fact that folks received the vaccine and and had some unease about it. And but I know that that was the right thing to do and I stand by that choice. What I need to hear from the administration is, okay, so we're going to lose staff, but what's the plan? And if we don't have a plan, then I think we need to reassess because we spent a good amount of time talking about, you know, our lagging academic results. You know, we, we can't be, we can't be working blindly here. So if we had heard, okay, we're going to increase pay for substitute teachers, we're going to, like, this is how we're going to pivot. But I feel like we got a, we got a suggestion that we were going to put this progressive punishment in place. And and we're considering two weeks of grace period. That's not a lot of grace. And the, and exactly how this was going to work was really never, it was never explained. And so so now we're in its reactive place. And I personally find it, you know, it, I I find it irresponsible to make this, to allow these, you know, additional staff to leave when we, we have, to my knowledge, no plan on how to replace them.
Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To go along with my colleague Ms. Gibson's point, you know, the fact that often what happens is the work is pushed upon those who stayed, right? The work that those who left, left behind. And so the teachers that we have left in the buildings end up working doubly as hard to try to take up the slack, you know? You know, what I, what I worry about is that this is an equity issue, right? It ends up punishing those who have less. I mean, our, our staff, our faculty, you know, our teachers who have the most are more flexible and can leave and find other opportunities, you know, take other risks. Those people like me as a single parent teacher, you know, who needs my income, I'm not going to take that risk, right? And I end up pretty much punished either way it goes because I have to stay. And so, you know, again, I want to look at a way of reframing this so that the incentive is not a punishment and that there are opportunities and options available for teachers who have very clear reasons, or teachers, staff, whatever, who have very clear reasons for not taking the vaccination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Ms. Dora?
Just a clarification from the administration. I don't think that the recommendation is to let the staff go. The progressive discipline is withholding one day of pay. So I just want to get some clarification. I also have a problem with this motion because I believe eight of us on this board voted for the mandate, approved the mandate, and now we're changing our votes because I'm unclear, and I feel like that's hugely unfair to all of the teachers that, and staff members that followed the mandate. So I think the progressive discipline is, starts with withholding one day of pay, and then it goes from there. So I'm just, I guess I'm just confused as to why we all voted for this mandate and now are taking it back.
Dr. Harris Mohammed? Ms. Page, were you next? Ms. Page, I'm sorry. Then, did you hear from Dr. Page? Ms. Page, your floor is yours.
Thank you. We really need to be realistic with one another because if you talk to anyone in any of the surrounding localities, the issues that we are facing, they are facing as well. They are, they are dealing with teachers stressed out, calling in. So we, we need to be realistic about this and and yes, I, I cannot support this motion because, yes, majority of us supported the mandate. Now we're going back on a decision that we made. And again, you can ask anyone in any other, any about, in our surrounding localities, they're dealing with the same thing. So why is Richmond unique or any different than any other locality? Let's, let's be real. And the vaccine, this has been politicized so much. Misinformation over social media and again, we need to be real with one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Is Dr. Harris Mohammed ready? Madam Chair? Anybody, Ms. White?
I just want to do a, say a follow-up. If I'm, if I'm, I want to make sure that I'm clear about this motion because I didn't think that it changed. I hear my colleague over here, but I didn't think that it changed the mandated at all concerning the, a date was given for vaccination. And if, if it wasn't done or submitted, then I thought it was termination. And now that's why I asked Mr. Camus, how many, how long would he go on with taking a person's pay? It is hard out here to be taking teachers' pay, just constantly taking their pay, and you still won't get the result that you're looking for. So I was kind of confused about this motion because I didn't think it changed the mandate at all. If a policy is made, then a policy should be expedited that way. I'm thinking that my colleague, Mr. Young, just wants to change the part about the actual money being taken from the teachers, if I'm correct. I just want to clarify that.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. White. Correct, though I did not support the vaccine mandate, I do not support the vaccine mandate. This motion does not revoke, to Ms. White's point, it does not revoke the vaccine mandate. Thank you.
Would you mind reading it again, then, Ms. Dora, so we can make sure that we're, we're clear on this?
Yes, ma'am. Richmond Public Schools shall neither reduce pay nor terminate any teachers or staff for failing to submit their COVID vaccination status if said teachers or staff agree to weekly COVID testing provided by RPS. Any teacher or staff person that was subject to a reduction in pay shall be reimbursed in full.
Thank you. Ms. Dora?
Just a clarification to Ms. White. When we voted for the mandate, it included a progressive penalty schedule, which included as part of it, one day of teachers' pay and then progressive actions thereafter, which I believe eight of us on this board voted for. So that's what I'm talking to. I'm not talking to the vaccine mandate. I'm talking to the actual shot in the arm. I'm talking to the mandate as a concept that we all voted on.
Yes, Ms. White?
Thank you, Ms. Dora, but that still seems to contradict a little bit. Yes, I'm talking about the mandate itself as the shot in the arm, but I still would like to know if it's repercussions of one day's pay. How come we're still continuing to take in pay after pay? I don't, I don't recall that we had a series of taking pay after pay, which Mr. Camus just stated.
May I, Mrs.?
Please.
Yes, Mrs. White. In an effort to avoid the ultimate progressive discipline, which is termination, we wanted to give the one day loss of pay per pay period some time to see if it would have an effect on people deciding to get the vaccine or not. If after several pay periods, it's clear that it has not, then I think we would have to contemplate termination. The reason that we are doing that multiple times is because we would like to avoid taking that ultimate step as much as possible.
I have a question, Mr. Camus. So what, because the original end date was October, the?
First.
First. Thank you so much, Mr. Camus. So when, when are we going to bring closure? I can see what my colleague, Ms. White, is saying. When are we going to bring closure to move forward? I mean, we know that by now, because the vaccines are so plentiful, so we're going to continue to, with currently in place, take funds away from persons because they haven't followed through as mandated. So when is that going to come to closure?
If you're asking, when would we move to termination? I don't know yet. I would like to give the withholding of one day of pay per pay period some time to see if it has an effect on our vaccination. I don't want to arbitrarily pick a date when we would take the ultimate action of termination. Again, because I would like to see if this would have the intended effect.
That's, that's concerning. That's concerning as well. The reason being is I'm in favor of what I voted for. We had the eight one vote. But if people continue to go on and on and on, and they don't get the vaccination, as plentiful as it is now, I mean, you could go almost any place and get the vaccination. Maybe they, maybe they never will get the vaccination. And I understand not wanting to terminate him about it. That's great.
Yes.
However, at some point, I think we do need to draw the line with something, one way or the other, so persons can plan as well. We should be able to plan as well, moving forward to cover those classes, if that's going to be the end result.
Yes, and I do think that date is drawing near. I'm just not prepared to issue that date tonight, but I'm certainly happy to provide that, not only to the board, but to our staff as well. Again, as a matter of grace, wanted to give people a little bit more time to meet the requirements of the mandate.
Floor is hers.
We're ready, Doctor.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Very well. Please go right ahead, just like you're here.
Thank you. The couple of concerns that I have is that at the time that we supported the administration's request for the mandate, I don't think any of us as the governing body understood or even could view the trajectory of teachers leaving, leaving our school division. That's one concern that I have. So we have to face the reality that they are leaving, not just due to COVID or the mandate, but also because of other reasons that have been shared earlier. I support the mandate. I know all of us keep children in the forefront. Safety is a priority, is, is a mountaintop for all of us. But I have, over the past few weeks, reviewed our personnel report. It is deeply concerning to me that we have a extended number of teachers leaving Richmond City Public Schools in the most sensitive areas, such as mathematics, English. And we had a report earlier on the student growth assessments, particularly in the area of literacy. I support the motion by Mr. Young because at times when we're making decisions, and again, I stand behind the mandate, but at what cost will I stand behind the mandate? We're already a division that has a mountain of challenges, also with a plethora of positives. One of those positives must be that we're going to continue to support our certified and classified staff. So I support the motion because of the large number of teachers who are leaving our division. I think that we need to have an extended discussion on what comes next. Because with that, they have to either be subject to the vaccination or weekly testing. But we don't have the long-term substitutes lined up to Richmond City Public Schools. I have received numerous, numerous emails from teachers at a variety of schools where they are covering classes every day because teachers are calling out the day of, and there are no substitutes for them. So not only are they losing their planning, they're losing any break that they have. And that's concerning for me in a profession that is my career. And so I can't stand by and watch us lose teachers, like, have teachers lose the division like this. So on this one, yes, I am throwing in the towel a little bit because I stood behind the administration on it, and I stand to understand behind that mandate. But again, at what cost? And so I do not want us to continue to go in a downward spiral because here's the theme, colleagues. In a few months, when we get another report at the end of the semester on data that's going to come out, what issue are we going to have then? When is the same conversation? Why aren't we moving our data forward? We have nowhere else to go but to the top. But we're not moving to the top because we don't have the people to move us to the top. So are we comfortable with having day-to-day substitutes in our classrooms? I'm not comfortable with that, that day-to-day subs. So we need to meet them at the medium. And I, again, I support Mr. Young's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a quick question. Would have the folks that we are speaking of, have they, has there been any conversation relative to, we've mentioned that we had hoped that the the removal of pay would kind of, you know, warrant a different outcome, and we see that that's not happening. Have we had any, you know, conversation around next steps or what it is that we want to do? Because I do think that we do want to keep the teachers, of course, specifically at the stage that we're in right now. But if we're just going off of, we'll keep taking pay in hopes versus coming to them and having some level of discussion to any other options that may or may not be there, maybe you can get some traction a little faster as opposed to waiting it out.
If I may, Madam Chair, I believe, and Ms. Lee can correct me if I'm wrong, but the loss of pay has not yet shown up in paychecks. And so, is that correct, Ms. Lee? Yes. And so I'm not sure that we know the impact of it just yet. But yes, the town office has reached out to try to answer any questions, provide any support, try to connect folks with the Department of Health as necessary, to try to address concerns that folks have. That has certainly been a big part of the work. Frankly, since we announced the mandate, gosh, almost, we're coming up on almost three months ago. So, yes, that has certainly, certainly been a part of it.
Madam Chair, a follow-up. And do we know if these folks are still working? They are actually still working, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so I think definitely something. Thank you.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make sure I'm clear. This might be the same that Ms. Jones was saying, but so if, if this vote, the motion on the table passes this evening, is it possible, the board has already voted to accept the, the personnel action items with the 29 resignations. I'm wondering if it's possible, you know, I don't know, does it require another vote from the board to reconsider those 29 resignations? I would, I would hope that the district would reach out to those staff members to see, you know, so, because I, I just, I do not want to lose staff if we don't need to. This is just such a critical time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a quick question for Mr. Camus. Since we're talking about resignation, when were the testing? Because I've been asking for testing, and I know that the federal government gave money to the health department. So why haven't we used it as a school system to do testing for our teachers? When it's free money, free place, set it up just like we're setting up a shots so that teachers can get tested. Then it won't have to worry about purchasing testing kits. It's there. So why we're not using it?
If I may, Madam Chair, so the money that the federal government gave for testing did not come to local school divisions. It went to state departments of education, state departments of health. We are actually one of, I believe, only three school divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia that signed up for the state's testing program. It's called Vista. It has taken quite some time, to be frank, to get through all of the MOUs and other steps that have to be taken with this program, with the state. And so it is close to being operational, but it is not operational just yet. Having spoken to several of my colleagues around the state, many of them opted not to participate, given how cumbersome this program has proven to be. Nonetheless, we thought it was critical that we were a participant, and so we are steadfastly working through all the red tape to get it up and running as soon as we possibly can.
Good, Ms. White. Follow-up. Anyone else before we vote? No further discussion. Are we ready to vote on the motion given by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms.? No further discussion. Are we ready to vote on the motion given by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms. Gibson? Does anyone need to hear it re-read, or are we good? Okey-dokey. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Door?
No.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Ms. Page?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. All right, next item on our agenda is we moved up 6.05, receive an update on school security.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we have discussed, we have had several schools this fall that have experienced a number of concerning incidents, most notably some very disturbing fights. As a result of that, several staff, including Chief App and Chief Harris, have pulled together a working group of individuals to work with each of those schools to craft a school-specific plan to provide the support that is necessary to ensure that more order and more safety is in place. These are works in progress and certainly will continue to iterate with the principal and their leadership team. But some of the things that have already taken place are some security upgrades, things like entry buzzers, ID badges, keys for teachers so that they can better manage the flow of students in various spaces in the schools. Some of the schools did not have adequate protocols for where teachers and other staff needed to be during passing periods. We're not maximizing the use of other personnel in the building, again, to help monitor the flow of students and to prevent incidents from happening before they do. There are some schools that certainly needed additional capacity. So we began to reassign some of the care and safety associates and student support specialists as needed to support those schools. Also offering and providing more training and assistance on social emotional support. So small group support from social workers and student support specialists, more support for the restorative rooms, which are meant sort of to be spaces to, as alternatives to suspension and as places where students can process some of the issues that are leading to some of these incidents. And then obviously, given our last conversation, prioritizing these schools for vacancies. I do also want to note that some of the young people involved in these cases, quite frankly, need for their own benefit and for the benefit of the other students in our schools, an alternative placement. And so we've been maximizing our ability to place students, not just at RAS, but in other programs like the Dooley Program, to ensure students who, none of these other measures are likely to have an impact on their behavior, to give them access to those other programs. There are some additional steps, and I know I've been asked some questions about discipline that has occurred. Obviously, I can't speak about that in an open session, but happy to answer those questions in closed session. Also, any other security matters, which it would not be prudent to talk about in an open session, given the sensitivity of that, that information. If you have any other questions, I know Dr. App and Dr. Harris have been most intimately involved in some of these conversations, and I'm sure I'd be able to answer your questions. Thank you.
Ms. Door?
Thank you for providing this update. I participated in a community circle with Ms. Sears, principal at TJ, and Dr. Baggot regarding building a safe and safe community at Thomas Jefferson. I found the conversation to be extremely valuable and enlightening. And to the extent other board members and leadership teams can participate in how we support our school communities around this important issue, I would definitely encourage, if it's not already in the plans, a plan to replicate this circle. I did advocate for Ms. White and Ms. Jones, and she is a former student at TJ, to be included in the TJ circles in the future. But if there's any other board members that would like to participate, please let me know. One of the things that was a takeaway for me around this circle at Thomas Jefferson specifically was some of the sort of missed opportunity as it relates to planning around rezoning and new students coming together at Thomas Jefferson. So I was wondering, don't have to answer it tonight, but I think it is something that, that we need to make sure that we're paying attention to and providing additional support to our principals and teachers, especially at the high school level. And then the second takeaway that I committed to leaving the circle was making sure that we have reasons for sort of robust after-school programming and enrichment, including making sure that we're leveraging our community partners around interesting and exciting things for kids to do after school that brings them together, as well as transportation after school, which I know is challenging, given our bus driver shortage. But I do think that the more that we can do to create enriching after-school programming for our kids, the better. And so I would love to see us, to the extent the board is amenable to this, some solutioning around both of those things. And to the extent we can do circles with both teachers, students, and community members and school board members, I think that's very powerful, so.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just don't know where to begin right now, but I'm looking at this slide. And Mr. Cameras, I did ask for a crisis intervention plan, and I don't see it here. And I didn't want to see your director or secretary, and I don't want to see him here either, to actually give this plan. But when I look, think about the security measures that we have in place, and I keep hearing about culture conflicts and circles and $3 million. You stated in the newspaper that you was for mental health. And all the schools that I see that I have, they only have one counselor for 400 or 500 children. Where's the resources for our children? And I hear Ms. Door say about the circus, but she has a school that don't even have a buzzer on the door. How security is that? I'm tired of seeing our children fighting, fighting. This fighting goes out into the street for, of violence. And we ask about violence? I'm a mother with two boys, and to see what I saw, I'm going to have to tell y'all, I would have to get off this board if that happened to my son. There is no way here in RPS that we should allow this as a board. Any child to get triple-banked, double-banked, beat to the floor. There is no way we want to bill a school George Wiff, and we got a culture conflict going over there. We got Dr. Baggett sitting in an alternative school, put some circles over there. It's a culture thing. It's been there for a while. And we sitting up here acting just like it's nothing. Oh, we're going to do some circles. Yeah, we're going to do some circles. I need a director of security here to give me his crisis intervention plan? How he has it set up at every school? I'm not going to compromise anything, because I see that's the last thing that you have here, Mr. Cameras. But this information that you gave me on school security, this is useless information. I can't do anything with this, but look at it. A parent needs to know at all times when her child goes to school, that her child is safe. Her child is not going to have to be retaliating, because that's what happens. Either they retaliate, they come back, or that child could also commit suicide. I don't want that on my hand as a board member. So we need to do something about this, because this just, what you gave me is just useless information. We put them over in an alternative school. The alternative schools don't have any fights. The alternative schools don't have any arrests. Tell me why the rest of the schools do. Yeah, sometimes it is leadership, but I need to see your crisis intervention plan, and I need to see the director of security here. We don't even know the director of security have of the board members, but I do. And I'd like to see Mr. Tobar at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would definitely like to see some more details about the increased social and emotional support, specifically in our high schools. I've spent time in schools. I've noticed that there are young people in those schools who like are just bottled up, ready to explode, for good reason, for very good reason. They've been through a lot. They're in school. They're asked to concentrate for 90 minutes at a time, in a time where like, you know, things have been happening. I haven't seen much time for them to decompress. You know, there'd be a great opportunity for like breaks in classes where people trained in social emotional support could come in and have listening sessions with our kids, anything to help them decompress. I also saw less emphasis on structured PE and activities. Our kids need to be active and engaged. Some of that will break down a lot of the tension that they're feeling. So, you know, this, we're talking about a crisis plan. We need to be in there figuring out how we can support our kids beyond just the punishment so that they are comfortable being in school and that they aren't, you know, so pent up and bottled up that they, you know, you know, I had a person tell me that a student was fighting, this is an adult, was fighting with another student, and then once they broke that up, the student turned around and fought the adult, or tried to. That's, that's just, that's just misplaced, you know, I don't know what to do with my emotions, right? And our students need help with that, and they need help now. And so I do want to know a lot more detail about what's going to happen with these social emotional supports and how they're going to be implemented in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to explore the comment my colleague, Ms. Door, made regarding the impact of rezoning. You know, this is something that we talked about during rezoning, and I don't know that we saw it through to recognize the impact that would have. And, you know, it impacted our students at John Marshall, too. There are, you know, we have room for more students. And so, and so, you know, if crowding in that school has impacted the school environment, I think it's worth revisiting. On another topic, I am a parent and recognize the impact that technology has on our students socially and how that impacts interaction during the school day. To be frank, many of these fights often begin with a text. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to take a step back and consider our policy. I have a motion I'd like to introduce. I, I move that Richmond Public Schools shall establish a working group composed of students, parents, teachers, and staff to review digital use by students during the school day, including but not limited to personal cell phones and RPS Chromebooks. The working group will benchmark against other districts and identify recommendations related to academic progress, student safety, and overall welfare. These recommendations will be presented to the board for consideration by April 1st, 2022. Additionally, RPS administration will provide data on student digital activity by January 31st, 2022. This data will include student computer use overall during the school day, time spent on websites non-inclusive of RPS curriculum, time spent on YouTube, and time spent on Google Hangouts. Thank you.
Second?
All right, it's been moved by Mrs. Gibson and seconded by Mr. Young. This is a long motion. That was a very long motion. I just want to make sure that I have it all in place. You have the paper to write it up?
Yes, I'm emailing it to our board clerk.
Thank you, and we'll probably get that to be repeated as well. And I have a couple of questions, but I'll wait until everyone else speaks. Is there anyone else that has a comment? I'd like to address this as well, and I understand what Mrs. White is stating. And I think it's required by state that all schools do have to have a crisis plan in place, at least it used to be. So we, we need to be able to pull that up and know what it is as well. I would also like, I'm thinking about Ms. Gibson's motion, a meeting I was in earlier this morning. We also need to look, we need to connect with our housing areas and our neighborhoods. Much of the distinction that comes on before the students even get on the school buses happen while they're waiting in line to get on the buses. It happens in the neighborhoods. Some, at some point, we need to stop working in silos, and I'm not saying it's anybody's fault, per se. But if we get to the point where it's the neighborhoods and the schools, which I know we have the Department of Engagement, something is missing with this, because this has been going on for years, been going on for years. I remember when one of my sons was bank, we ended up in court, okay? But I'll share this with you as well. It happens at the elementary level. It happens at the elementary level. So, and this is before TikTok, okay? This is before TikTok and all the rest. So it goes back to the mental health piece, the whole circle. But until we address the whole child, be it home, be it school, be it community engagement, after-school programs isn't going to fix the problem. All right? It's not going to fix the problem. But until we all get to the point where we can come to the table. So I like what Ms. Gibson just stated, but I also would like to see, if we're going to have students on this committee, that be mindful of the instructional time as well. I mean, what's the, what's the framework of having someone in place to measure how often they're on their digital devices? That concerns me, because I don't want to take a teacher out of a class or a student away from his or her. But how do you determine how often people are on the computers? I've been in, as a principal and a teacher, where students are taping what's going on on their phones, but you don't see it because it's down on their desk until that evening there's something on the, on the internet. In fact, it was at one of the schools that we just talked about. So my concern is at some point, we need to go from cradle to career. All right? Cradle to career, where everything connects. And as great as we have great intentions to fix this, something is wrong. And it's all across. It's just not in the city of Richmond. And it's unfortunate that those who are financially in a different realm have means and networking power to clear up their things that we don't hear about. So at some point, whether it's the public housing, whether it's the neighborhood housing, whether it's the apartments, at some, at some point, we need to be at the table together and at the end of the day, be there for the whole child. So I don't want us to put a Band-Aid on this, and this is serious. This is serious. I had asked one time maybe about having bathroom monitors, just like we have cafeteria monitors, lunch monitors, which is unfortunate to get to that point, because we don't want to be hovering over our children. But children need to feel safe at school. Children need to feel safe. But the lethal thing can set some people energies off because of things that's going on that we don't know anything about. So that's my two cents. Yes, Mr. Young, who's next? Ms. Page?
Thank you. My concern is, I understand where Ms. Gibson is going with the motion, but I'm concerned, is this a well-thought-out plan? Have we really had a discussion? And some guidance from the administration? Again, is this a well-thought-out plan? And are we capturing everything, or we're just touching the surface and not really looking at the root of the problem? Because there are some underlying issues that need to be addressed, that are not being addressed. So I'm just afraid that we're not being intentional with, with this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add, you know, months ago, when we talked about Chromebooks, it, I, I'm not sure it may have been Mr. Stanley, but you know, someone indicated that they, or maybe even Dr. Epp indicated that they were aware that there are software out there that our surrounding counties have been using to monitor Chromebook, you know, or school issued laptop use. I've seen that in action. You know, I don't know where we are with that. But I do think that while students are in school, they should be on those Chromebooks focused on school work. And there are ways of monitoring that.
Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to reiterate, I understand Ms. Gibson's motion. And the phones is a big, plays a big part in the schools. And most kids are engaged on their phones versus the teachers. But we sit here and we said about learning loss. Well, when a teacher is actually teaching, they're only actually telephone. And the incident that we're actually talking about is safety. When you have someone using their phone to actually film something and then put it on an actual website, to me, the schools should not have a phone. Because what is the purpose of anything that they need? They can actually, if it's emergency, they're going to have to go to the office anyway. So do they need phones to actually film fights and put it on a fight page? Do they need phones to not engage into the teacher's lesson? So maybe we should have on this motion, more teachers. They'll probably tell you that they'll bring their cell phones to school and engage in their phones. So I'm not sure, my colleagues said we didn't follow up or look through. I would like to hear more of that, what we didn't catch. Because what we didn't catch, we need to catch on this one for safety purposes.
If I may, there is a high school, in fact, I'll share the school's name, John Marshall High School. There's a teacher there that because of relationship she has with her students, when they come into the classroom, they put their cell phones in a box. And when they leave the classroom, they pick them up. That teacher is a phenomenal teacher. She has a lovely relationship with her students and they trust her and she trusts them. And her, her dad always looks great and it goes, but she's been there for years, but it goes back to the relationship piece there. And you're making a very good point because number one, it is in our scope book, score book, excuse me, that students can have phones, but they're not supposed to be taken out of there, which is, that's hard to manage being realistic. So as, at some point, maybe moving forward to have some type of system because they are, you can go to a play and you put your phone in a little, little plastic bag with your name on it. And you put it on a code or whatever they give you. Then when you check out, you get your phone back. So there are strategies of which to do that, but we're adding on to the list of things for teachers to do. But in the long run, we, we just want our children to learn and stop losing time otherwise, instructional time. So this is a bigger picture than, than, thank you so much. Bigger picture than what we started out with, but lots, lot, good discussion in terms of moving forward on behalf of school safety, but also guarding the teaching and learning process time. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? Ms. Gibson and then Ms. Door.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And along those lines, I think it's important, too, to, as we're talking about social emotional learning, I mean, you know, when, when a student has a cellphone, they're not necessarily talking to the friend sitting right next to them. You know, and, you know, there's been a lot of media lately around the impact that our students and young folks are, are facing as related to having, so, you know, folks having such easy access to technology. And it's, you know, so I, I think that there are, are large implications on, on why this should be reviewed, including, you know, you know, academic progress, socio economic, socio, I'm sorry, social, emotional, and, and just, you know, and, and school safety, all of those things in this, in this one issue, which I think makes it a pretty big deal.
Ms. Door?
Just a quick note. I, I do hope that, I think this is an important topic. I'm glad that we're discussing it as a board. I plan to support it. I do hope, just wanted to note that we did, I did, I have been trying to not approve night of motions after we approved our board governance manual. And this is the second night of motion. It doesn't seem like we're following our governance manual, so I'm not going to follow it if I'm going to be, you know, in the minority there. But I hope that in the future, we can, when we have important topics like this, we can make sure that we allow for ample time for public comment and follow our processes.
Ms., thank you, Ms. Jones.
So I was trying to refrain from jumping in this because it is a really sensitive subject. And we have been talking about it for a very long time. And it continues to come up. And when it comes up, it's almost like we are going back and forth between who's the problem, who's the blame, who's the problem? We, to my understanding, have certain supports in place. I mean, I don't think this is a either or, it's more of a and. And when you said that, Chair, something was missing. What's missing is the plan that should already be in place. If we have this as a part of our strategic plan, restorative practices, culture, and climate, where's the plan? So that we can begin working together as a board to implement it. And then this kind of eliminates these containers that we are continuing to build with. Let's create an advisory committee over here. Let's create a meeting over here. Let's create a team over here. And we're not able to move anything forward because they're staying in these containers. And then when it's time to move forward, we still don't have a plan. So I, for me, I think, I would like to see what the plan is, present that to us as the board, and allow us to work with the administration and allow the administration to maybe share with us instead of assuming maybe, and I'm not saying anyone is, but allow them to let us know what the help is, what do they need? So that if we have a plan, we can begin implementing it. I think a lot of times it's we, we, we're the board, so we're looking from the outside and, and we all want what's best. All here for the same reason. We're all here for the safety, security, the well-being of our students. And it gets lost in this space sometimes right here because we don't have a plan in front of us. We only meet, I think someone said this earlier, every two weeks. And so there's not enough information, there's not enough time. And then we're again reacting by moving a motion through. And then all we do is come right back to the same place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Madam Chair, just briefly, I once had one of our CEOs, I principals, one of our largest schools, share with me that 80% of her problems in the building originated from cell phones. That wasn't Jonathan's statistic, but one of our CEOs. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion before we move forward? Ms. White?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have one question. What's the cameras? So next month or next week, will we be receiving that crisis intervention plan from the director of security, Mr. Tobar?
If I may, Madam Chair, all of the crisis intervention plans were uploaded via a link to Board Docs on our August 16th meeting. So they are available there.
Thank you. All right, are we ready to vote on this, the motion? Would you please be so kind to repeat the motion again? And then we'll move forward for vote, Madam Chair.
Ms. Door?
Do you want to read the motion again?
We wanted to hear.
I'll read the motion again.
Thank you.
Richmond Public Schools shall establish a working group composed of students, parents, teachers, and staff to review digital use by students during the school day, including but not limited to personal cell phones and R P S Chromebooks. The working group will benchmark against other districts and identify recommendations related to academic progress, student safety, and overall welfare. These recommendations will be presented to the school board for consideration by April 1st, 2022. Additionally, R P S administration will provide data on student digital activity by January 31st, 2022. This data will include student computer use overall during the school day, time spent on websites not inclusive of R P S curriculum, time spent on YouTube, and time spent on Google Hangouts.
Are you ready to vote? I do have one comment. I, I can't support that motion be, because it's the students. My, my fear is taking students away from instructional time as well as teachers for another responsibility that's going to require research, going to require a different level of support. I don't have a problem with the study. I think it would be excellent. I just have a concern in terms of, again, putting something else on folk plates with all this already going on. But it should be, if there's a private study or someone else that we can have to do this, great. But I can't support it in terms of student instructional time. Be it after school, during school, and teachers as well. Thank you. Let's vote.
Ms. Door?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Muhammad?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Ms. Page?
No.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, 6.02, receive an update on the 2223 calendar development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I'm sure the public recalls, and I imagine the board as well, we had a lengthy discussion last spring regarding an extended year calendar in large part based on requests that several board members had made for quite some time and in response to the pandemic, which we already anticipated was going to have a significant impact on student learning. We ultimately decided to delay implementation of that extended year calendar until the 2223 school year. And now that we have gotten past the opening of this school year, it is time to return to that conversation and put forward several calendars for discussion with the board, the public, and all of our stakeholders. Tonight, what I just wanted to do was to outline several goals and to ask the board if there were others that they felt were important and to lay out a timeline for decision making so that we can be aligned both on the goals of the process and on the engagement timeline. First and foremost, I think it's rather timely that we had the growth assessment data today because I think it is incontrovertible that our students need additional support and certainly would benefit from additional instructional time. That would in and of itself be beneficial, but also by shortening the summer would reduce what is well researched and known as the summer slide. So that's first and foremost. Second, by lengthening the year, it creates more, in essence, breathing room in the schedule to allow for more dedicated time for things like community circles and other direct social and emotional learning and supports. Third, with a longer year, we do feel it's important that there are predictable and sustainable breaks. I think the break that we had this past week was very much appreciated by our staff. That said, it's important that these things are known to our families well in advance. And so that is something else that we think is critical. We want to maintain inclusivity in the calendar. We added several religious holidays and think it's important that we continue to do that work. Believe it's important to avoid half days wherever possible. They are not the most robust instructional days, and they're logistically difficult for our families. It's important that we ensure the operational feasibility of any calendar. That's everything from budgets for additional compensation for teachers, but it's also transportation, food facilities, all the implications of having a longer year. And of course, critical that we have extensive engagement and we really hear from stakeholders about the various options. Towards that end, here is a draft timeline discussing the goals tonight. The plan would be to introduce three drafts for consideration at our next meeting on November 15th, and then take the balance of November and December to conduct extensive engagement through all of our channels, through our remind app, remind app, excuse me, R P S Direct, R P S Live, R P S en Español, all of our social media channels and backpack letters, an online survey that only allows users to respond once. We certainly learned some of the pitfalls of the earlier strategy last year. At least three virtual information sent, sessions, as well as on the ground interaction with families through community walks. Also various radio engagement sessions and of course, public comment. The goal would be to, based on all that feedback, provide a final recommendation to the board at our first meeting in January and then vote at our second meeting in January so that families would have time to prepare. And then, of course, the rest of the winter and spring focused on ensuring that families were aware of the implications of the new calendar. I do want to just reiterate again, given the scores we saw today, I do believe additional time, which will not only allow our students to grow academically, but also to experience so many of the social and emotional supports that we're talking about with a more, or rather, a less tight schedule, I think would be incredibly beneficial. With that, I'll pause, take questions or any other comments, any other goals that the board members feel are critical for these drafts as we prepare them and any feedback on the timeline as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Door, then Ms. Gibson.
Thank you. I'm glad that we are having this conversation. Certainly, I know families are eager to weigh in on this. A couple of requests around the outreach schedule. I'd ask on the survey that we, parents get a robocall to remind them to take the survey several times. And on the survey that there is an opportunity for folks to weigh in with different tweaks. So I've received a bunch of good ideas from the community about ways that we can tweak this. Finally, I think when we were talking about the calendar last year, we're talking about kind of in the context of year round school, I think that that was a misnomer. Really, it's more of an extended calendar, so I like this name better. I know other localities, I believe Chesterfield has called it a balanced calendar. So I think this is a change and change is challenging. And so the more that we can do to make sure that families understand what we're proposing and what we're not proposing will also be really important because I think when we were talking about year round school last year, folks were, you know, understandably concerned because they were like, oh, my kid's going to be in school 365 days a year. And so I do think that it will take a lot of education and just making sure that, that folks understand what we're, what we're talking about here. But thank you for bringing this forward, and I'm looking forward to the conversation with the community.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few thoughts related to the calendar. One, you know, as we were talking about full year school, that there were budget implications to that, and I want to make sure that the timeline
to that, and I want to make sure that the timeline and the process is inclusive of the budget. And I think in terms of goals, I would like to highlight a couple of things. One, you know, having some consistency or similarities between our district's calendar and the neighboring school district calendars, I think that there is benefit to that in terms of access to childcare, in terms of staff that may work in one and have students in the other. So I think that there is certainly benefit to that. We have students in governor schools, so looking for similarities as much as possible. We don't necessarily, you know, it's not good for the region if we're all completely deep beating to a different drum. I'd also like the district to consider including floater days for religious holidays. If there are holidays that perhaps not, you know, we don't see large numbers of our students or staff participating in, we would want to still allow folks to be able to celebrate, but perhaps it would allow us a bit more flexibility to provide students and staff with flexibility. I think that would be something to consider doing. As a parent, I can say, you know, half-days, while they're not ideal, they're not necessarily worse than a whole day. You know, folks have to take time off of work, but it's a bit easier to leave work a bit early, you know, a few days than it is to take a whole day. You know, vacation time is a premium, and I know, you know, folks, there were folks last week that had to take off a whole week of work. And so that's something to consider. We also didn't consider, I don't think, the reality that there were kids home alone last week. And that's on us as a district to recognize as we make these changes. The last thing is, so as we look at the calendar, I would ask that we have a few options and that they are different, you know, like we have several different options so that we're able to, so that we're able to get good feedback from the community on that range. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else regarding the calendar? Ms. Rizzi? Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for this presentation. My only question would be, or concern, just, you know, I'd like to see that there's evidence that during the feedback gathering time, that feedback, our community's feedback, is actually taken into consideration. I'd like to see evidence that there's true engagement of all our families and that what they say actually is taken into consideration and that our plans honestly include what it is our families have to say, even if it, you know, goes against what's recommended or what's proposed. So, you know, I just need to make sure that this is going to be true engagement as opposed to just a PR tour of what's already being proposed. And so however that is, I would like the board to have, you know, regular communication reports on how feedback is gathered, what our communities are saying, and how that feedback actually is taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
On this proposal, I would like to actually see, looking at holidays, maintain inclusivity, I would like to see veterans stay up here. And I'm not sure why it's not, but I would like to see that. But I am, I would like to make sure that RPS, looking at this proposal goals, can protect and ensure the best for our children. I'm looking at, this is a year-round proposal that's going to happen, and our children now is in school six to eight hours a day, or it's been half of the year. And it seems like we continue to have failures in our logistics areas, transportation, food, building maintenance. Now, we're going to have year-round, we need to ensure that these logistics are in place. Also, I've been seeing resources. I haven't seen anything about resource. These children will be in school year-round, all day. We don't have the resources now, and I keep hearing that we promised that we're getting counselors, we're getting behavior. When are we going to put those people in place? We need that in place before we go to year-round. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, then we can get ready to move to the next item. Colleagues, be mindful that it is 9:22. We haven't followed anything else with governance, have we? So, here we go. Next item on the agenda, receiving update on George with construction process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the hiring fund, still no movement yet on the director of school construction, but the other two positions have not started. We're vetting the seven proposals that we received for completeness, finalizing the evaluation committee, and then, of course, I know the board has submitted its letter to the mayor requesting the transfer of funds, and my understanding is the mayor will be responsive very soon.
Any questions, discussion? Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I would motion that Richmond Public Schools shall assign immediately $2 million in monies from the unassigned balance in RPS Capital Improvement Fund. Said money shall be used for architectural design services for George with High School, a career and technical high school, and Woodville Elementary School. Any dollars of the $2 million spent on design should be reimbursed upon receipt of an anticipated $10 million as previously allocated for school design construction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Young, suggested by Ms. White, to move the $2 million to cover the cost of Wood, excuse me, with Technical Center and Woodville. Discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One is a technical legal matter. I don't know that the board is able to move those funds into a new school construction capacity. I don't know either way, but I do think that is worthy of further investigation. Two, I do want to note the list of items that are on our capital list for this year that will not happen if these funds are reallocated. Blackwell Elementary School is supposed to get a new generator. Brown Middle School replacing their fire alarm system. Carver Elementary School, a new addition to their roof replacement, upgraded classroom lighting, switches, and panel boxes. Chambrazo Gym and upstairs hallway roof replacement, upgraded classroom and hallway lighting. Community High School, fire alarm panel and all devices. Henderson Middle School, a new generator. Holton Elementary School, a new generator. Miles Jones Elementary School, a new generator. Swansboro Elementary School, a roof replacement, and various warranty extensions across the school division. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, my question is, how come we're just knowing about all of this? Because we didn't know anything about this as a board. And then also, I believe in the papers, you also included a warranty, which I didn't know anything about the warranty. So how come the board is not informed on the causes that we need to take care of? And soon as a motion is made to take money out, now we have a list of things that we must do. We should be informed as a board on what things that needs to be taken care of. That's unacceptable.
Mrs. White, this is on page 165 of the budget.
No, but I'm saying, you just gave us that.
Excuse me. That you approved when we passed our budget for this fiscal year and that we discussed as part of our budget process. This is a public document which is available to everybody, and this was part of the budget that this body approved.
So on that, was the warranties on there too?
Yes, ma'am.
Because we didn't, I don't recall knowing anything about warranties that we needed to take care of.
Again, it's on page 165 of the published budget book.
So Superintendent Cameras, let it be clear, so the items that you just listed, that's all apart about CIP maintenance budget that this board approved.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know all my colleagues know what I'm going to say next, but for the benefit of persons perhaps and public who may not be as intimately familiar with all the dollars and cents on the subject, we have a balance of approximately $3.6 million relevant to capital. This motion would temporarily assign, temporarily assign $2 million to expedite the design work relevant to the three or four mentioned schools to be reimbursed immediately subsequent the anticipated $10 million or likely more than $10 million relevant to the capital outlay. I've heard, we have all heard, a recurring consensus relevant to the prioritization of these new school buildings, including first and foremost, George with. It seems to me that temporary allocation or assignment of $2 million to ensure that we can, we can do precisely what has been asked of us is a common sense measure. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a question regarding, all right, let's say that we do get funds from the, the city council does approve if we get to that point. But you said we're going to get, how much, how many millions with that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The balance, the balance was $10.8 million. We've been advised, I think last report, that that may be spent down another $500,000, perhaps, perhaps that $500,000 will increase contingent on what some of these other deficiencies on our new buildings include, but bottom line, I think we're anticipating somewhere in the range of $10 million.
What my question is, I don't want to count our chickens before they hatch. So we're getting ready to move on a motion, and right now we aren't sure what amount of money we have. Is that correct?
What we, what we do know is that the last three schools cost us $5.5 million relevant to architectural design. This is $2 million in temporary assignment, anticipating at $10 million.
Then my second question is, we're speaking of the Tech Center. We haven't even discussed that, and right now we have some legal issues going on there as you well know, so. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to note, let's suppose for a moment that the city council were to reappropriate all of the remaining new school construction funds to RPS for new school construction. You then cannot use those funds to reimburse for maintenance activities. So even if this motion were to be passed this evening to quote-unquote temporarily use these funds, which I'm not sure we can for new school construction, but again, I would defer to the finance people and the lawyers on that one. Two things. One, these projects won't start anytime soon. And two, they can't, we cannot backfill these projects with money that's allocated for new school construction. I wish the rules weren't this complicated, but the way the budget works is funds are allocated for specific purposes. And so I think we just need to, we just need to face a hard choice. You can put them, assuming it's allowable, you can move this money for the design of George with, which is an understandable and legitimate stuff to take. I think this board would need to understand there is a trade-off to that. And the trade-off to that is everything that I listed is not going to happen this year. And I can't speak to the future because I don't know what we're going to get in the future. Those are, that's a worthy debate to have, but we can't have our cake and eat it too. So the board just needs to face this very tough decision. And again, I would, I would seek the advice of financial experts from the city, from our own staff, and legal advice as to whether we are even able to reappropriate these funds for new school construction when they were appropriated to us for maintenance. Again, I didn't create these rules. I wish they were simpler, but that is my understanding of the situation.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Thank you, Superintendent Cameras, for your comment. So the categories are approved during the budget process, you know, as we go through that process. So if we're talking about, we allocated those funds, we had to go back to council for them even to approve that. So once again, no planning, poor planning, and we don't have a plan. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote? I'm sorry, Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, where are we with the, and putting in the requests right now for the money with city council? Where do we stand right now with that?
The board has submitted a request to the mayor's office. My understanding is we should receive a response this week.
This week, you say?
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to ask, since there does seem to be a question here, because, you know, to be honest with you, when we first started down this road, I was told by certain people, oh, I don't know if it's even legal for schools to build schools. And it was stated to me as though it was a statement of fact. And so with this, I need to see documentation for both financial experts and legal that it is not possible for us to reimburse ourselves if we use some of this money in advance for the design and then take the money that council approves and, as you say, backfill and replenish the funds for the other projects. I just need to see some documentation. I'm not saying that you aren't right about that. I just, I would like to see that policy written out and evidence of it.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. And it's Ms. White.
Yes, this question is for Mr. Lilly. I'd just like to know, based on we're going back and forth, whether it's legal to use the money or not, can you tell us that, Ms. Lilly?
I am not prepared to answer that question tonight. The question just came up tonight as far as that is concerned. I would talk with, and I can as early as tomorrow, get with the finance department here in Richmond Public Schools because the matter of transferring money is something that, you know, is a question that comes up, and we'd have to look at the ordinances with the city charter and all of that as well. And so I can do that as early as tomorrow, but I am not prepared to answer that question tonight.
All right, no further discussion. We're ready to vote. I'm sorry, Ms. Gibson. Ms. Young, come on now, help me. You're supposed to tell me who's ready to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say, I'm incredibly proud of my colleagues that have persisted despite roadblock after roadblock after roadblock. First, we were told that if we were to build our own schools, that we wouldn't be able to build them until 2027. We were told that there was no way we could hire enough staff. We were told that we were going to need dozens of staff in order to get the job done. We got to a point where we had to force a motion in order to get an RFP. We were told then we didn't have the money. We were told, no, now the city might need the money. We were told, no, now the city might need the money because they've messed up these other projects. And now we're being told that it's illegal for us to use the money. But we will persist. We have decided as a board that enough is enough. With whatever cronyism has been going on, we will build these schools right. We will spend money efficiently and fairly and build great schools. So here's what I have to say. Get out of our way. We're going.
All right. Any, yes, Mister Jones. All right, let's vote. Madam Burke, Mr. Young, if you want to repeat the motion?
Yes, ma'am. Richmond Public Schools shall assign immediately two million dollars in monies from the unassigned balance in RPS capital improvement funds. Said money shall be used for architectural design and services for Georgetown High School, a career technical high school, and Woodville Elementary School. Any dollars of the two million spent on design shall be reimbursed upon receipt of an anticipated ten million dollars as previously allocated for school design construction.
Madam Burke?
Ms. Dorr?
No.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mister Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
No.
Ms. Page?
No.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item, and it is nine thirty-eight PM, colleagues. Six point zero four, receive a recommendation to conduct a River City Middle School rezoning, excuse me.
Good evening. A couple of years ago, the board approved new zones across the division, and one of those redrawings of zones was around our new middle school, River City. The committee's focus was to maximize the number of students who would be able to learn in this wonderful new state-of-the-art building. However, due to student age populations growing at a higher-than-projected rate and continued transience during COVID, the zones for River City are currently larger than the capacity of the school. We'll look at the numbers very briefly. Yes, next slide. So the numbers you see here, River City is at capacity at around fifteen hundred students. The numbers you'll see for grade six, seven, and eight are current RPS students in elementary school that would be zoned for the school at that particular grade. So you'll see in the total, both this year and beyond, we're over capacity at River City. Now, of note, right now, River City is not over capacity, and that's because of the number of students who are part of open enrollment or specialty school programs. But that's not something that we want to necessarily bank on. And so we want to rethink what the zones will look like in order to be sure that the school is appropriately zoned. There will be two other impacted schools then in the South Side. If you could go forward two slides or one slide. Then the next is Bouchal. Bouchal has a capacity right now of around eight hundred and eighty-five students and is currently, has somewhere between five hundred and around five hundred and fifty schools, fifty kids slated to be in the school. The other South Side Middle School on the next slide is Brown. Brown has a capacity of a little under eight hundred. You'll see the number of kids that are actually zoned for Brown range between four hundred and thirty-ish, although their current enrollment is much closer to six hundred, and that's again, given the utilization of open enrollment students attending there. And so what we are proposing this evening is to take the next couple of months, which Shaday will talk us through, to bring together a rezoning committee to look at the zones for River City and bring a recommendation to this board in April or so, and I'll let Shaday talk through the process.
Thank you, Michelle. As we've heard tonight, we've learned several lessons from past rezoning efforts, and we all know how important it is to have those who are most impacted a part of the process and a part of the decision-making. So as we go forward, we thought it was important that we have clear engagement goals, goals that are steeped in community members who live in those impacted community receiving timely and up-to-date information on the process, that they understand rezoning and how it will impact their children, how they can share their opinions and ideas with the school board, and how we can really partner with already trusted community members, organizations, and leaders to make sure people are engaged throughout the process. And then lastly, we want to make sure that we have a diverse rezoning committee that they can provide recommendations to you, and not just committee meetings, but really have working sessions in which we can dig into the information. Next slide, please. So in order to do this, we have a variety of strategies that we want to use. Again, we talked about the committee having work sessions. They will be held twelve, twice a month, and we want to really use that time to explore options and craft recommendations that we can bring back to you. We will have two formal public hearings in the community at Brown Middle School and Bouchal, several community member, community meetings throughout the division, but in those areas that we know our families are and who will be impacted by the process. In addition, community walks, community corners, home visits, going door to door. That has been such an effective strategy for us already. And to your point, Ms. Rizzi, making sure we collect that information from those home visits, from that information, and make sure we're bringing it back to the committee as well as the leadership. So we've embedded all of that. And again, just being present, being visible, and utilizing all of our communication platforms. Matthew? So a little bit more about the committee. Again, learning best practices, a smaller committee that has two community members, parents, teachers, students, a representative from the transportation department, principals are designees from impacted schools, board members from the eighth and ninth district. We want to have a, we don't want the committee to be too small, but it's important that we have the application process, that we can have a variety of people who can either apply, but we're also going to use our on-the-ground efforts over the next couple of weeks to make sure that we can do outreach to people and encourage them to imply and support them throughout the process. You can see the details here of the committee, and the last slide just takes you through the entire engagement process. We want to do a better job of communicating, not just what engagement's going to look like the first month, but what is engagement going to look like from November to May? So we can have a full spectrum of community meetings. When does a work session happen? When are the walks happening? So this is an outline, and then our goal would be to then follow this up with the specific places and the times, but to give that information from, from December into April, May, where a decision is made. So we have a comprehensive engagement calendar. And although these represent many strategies, we know it's important to take feedback as we go through this process. So as our community members, family members continue to share other strategies, we can continue to add to this. But we felt this was a strong representation of how we can start and really make sure our families, our students, our staff, our leaders are at the heart of this process. At this time, Michelle and I will take any questions.
Ms. White?
Thank you for the presentation. Dr. Harris, but I do have two questions. I'm seeing that in your committee, you have students. What is the reason for the students in your committee for, you said two community members, two parents, caregivers, two students in this rezoning? What is the purpose for students in your rezoning?
So I think it's important that as we do this process, we understand students are at the center. And as we think about where our students will be going, we think it's central for their voice to be a part of the process. Similar to parents, I think it's important to make sure our students, our families feel comfortable and confident to participate in those meetings, and that's why we do a lot of support even outside the meetings when we have a variety of people engaged. But in order to have a process that is about students, we thought it was important that they are also a part of the process.
And my next question is, speaking of best practices, because I did hear you said that. And I'm looking at your data, came from Aspen on October the twelfth. And if I recall the rezoning process that you did the last time, it was done by using the cropper data. And for best practice, it is crossed over in boundaries. So what data will you be using this time, and what boundaries would you be using so that they won't cross over? Where you have a student live on this side and got to go all the way over here to another school instead of using the closest boundary for that child to go to the school that they live in? Because I did follow your rezoning the last time, and most of the rezoning was done by the cropper, used the cropper data to actually put kids, just sort of drop kids in certain schools. And then those kids are, a kid could live on another side and go way over to Broad Rock and still are using the banners of Bouchal and Lucille Brown. So what are your plans on, what type of data source would you be using this time?
So the data that was on the first couple of slides are actual current RPS kids that based on our current zones are zone two at school. So we're building on the efforts and work of the past, and we're only looking at the South Side schools. So we're not looking to rezone somewhere north of the river or something like that.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, the South Side schools. When it was Elkhart and Thompson, they used the cropper to do this. And I see that you have Aspen, and I know children, families do move a lot. So I wanted to know, how would you, would you go back boundaries, or would you just do the same thing before? I'm looking for best practices, because I know when they did cropper, they just dropped children in different areas. And that's why we still have this zoning, this overcrowding right now in certain areas. And I know my colleague, I was listening to my colleague here about one of her schools, and there's no, there's really no students at John Marshall, but you have the schools, the students that were at John Marshall, they now go to Thomas Jefferson. So, and they live closer to Thomas Jefferson. That was another drop in. So this time, if we're going to rezone, let's get it right and take out some of the overcrowness that we have. Because there's a lot of overcrowness in the South Side. I do know that.
Sure. The zone that we're going to be looking at is the River City zone and reducing the number of kids that are zoned there by looking at ways to change the boundaries as it relates to both Bouchal on the right and Brown on the left. We, we are not going back and looking at longer-term projections data, like we're not bringing cropper in for this work. We're using data that we had from the past and then current student enrollment and residency information to see where current enrollment patterns look. And then we'll be reducing the enrollment simply in River City, in just these two other schools.
And so what schools, high schools would they follow to, both of them? Would the ones at Bouchal go straight to Georgetown and Lucille go to Huguenot? How would they follow?
That will be the work of the committee is to determine how the, the zones will be built out, but, so I can't speak to that right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, thank you both for information on this and your presentation on Dr. Harris. You know, I'm looking at the committee composition, and you know, you mentioned tapping already trusted leaders. I really trust that at least one of those leaders come from the parents and the communities of our English language learners, who I think have been largely left out of a lot of this process that we've been talking about and things that we've been discussing that are occurring in the eighth and ninth district, when that is our largest growing population there. And so I really would love to see, you know, half of this committee be comprised of people from that community because just about, they compose half of the community members in those districts now and have been largely, you know, not included. At least I haven't heard their voices the way I think they need to be heard.
Absolutely. We couldn't agree more. Ms. Rizzi, I think it's extremely important, and I think that's why those engagement goals were so important for us to lay out, is because we believe that those most impacted, and you can't have a conversation about the South Side without talking about, especially from an asset base, the, a major amount of contributions and culture that our Latin American families bring. And I think to have, they will be a huge force on the South Side as well as, we know, the rich African-American culture on the South Side, right? That often you don't hear about, right? So I think that committee will be a balance of both of those things as they, they represent the majority of what makes South Side so strong.
Yes, and you know, leaders do exist in that community, so it'd be nice to tap some of them.
Yes, yes. We have already, you know, started to think about connections, but we also want to launch an application process so we can be as fair as possible and make sure everyone has access. But those relationships that we already have, we definitely want to continue to use those as well as develop more.
Any other questions? That's it, Mr. Young? All right. And Mr. Desto?
Right. The next item on the agenda is six point zero six, collective bargaining. I don't think I skipped anything.
I believe this was a request from Ms. Gibson, so I will defer to her if there's anything that she would like to cover. But just a brief update, Ms. Burke, when you and I were chatting on the phone earlier today, I did make the motion proposing that we set up an ad hoc committee. I believe it is best practice that we missed a step there, which was identifying which board members are going to be involved in that ad hoc committee. So I think it would be good to get aligned on which board members would like to be a part of that committee, and then any additional thoughts that the rest of the board would like to share.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we had an election just a week ago, and I think it's safe to say that the new administration is less aligned to the prospect of collective bargaining than, I hope, the majority of this board. I, I don't think that we can wait. I am eager to see this board adopt the collective bargaining resolution as it's been stated, and I, it concerns me that now, more than two weeks after we talked about forming an ad hoc committee, that we're just now realizing that we don't have anyone on it. And so if we're serious about allowing our teachers the ability to have us at the table, then I, I ask my board colleagues to consider moving forward with the proposed resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. I can't recall how the number, the breakdown. I know we had so many board members, so many teachers, so many. We had, we did have three board members?
I proposed three board members, and then it was proposed that there were representatives from the REA slash VEA and administration. So it was not specified the number. I think what, what we need is someone to quarterback this from the school board's perspective to make sure that we have meetings set up and we're corralling all the necessary people.
So were you going to do that, or?
I would, no, I'm not volunteering to do that.
So can we get a volunteer tonight to spearhead that committee? And get the ball rolling? Okay, now everyone's speaking. Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. All right, Ms. Rizzi, would you like a co-chair? The co-chair can be the school board person, or it can be somebody from the associations that were listed. I would also, I know we voted, did we vote on that? We voted on that. I was motion as well. The reason I was asking is, I would like to see, maybe this is something the committee can bring back, Ms. Rizzi, when you all meet. The opportunity for some parents or pay people from the community as well would be a part of this committee? Stakeholders, or was it just coming from the perspective of school board, administration, and the teachers' associations?
No, I just volunteered. So creating this committee is not going to be my responsibility. I'm just volunteering.
All right, so we need to, we're meeting again next week. Maybe we can forward suggestions to you in terms of, so we have some type of framework when we come back on the, next Monday, this coming Monday, I should say. If we can have a framework per se, of who else would like to volunteer to be on that committee?
I believe Dr. Harris Mohammed, BR.
Dr. Harris Mohammed would like to co-chair. Dr. Harris Mohammed says she would co-chair.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, so we have Dr. Harris Mohammed and Ms. Rizzi will co-chair this committee and we'll move forward with that. Any questions?
Yes, Dr. Harris Mohammed would like to speak.
Go right ahead, Ms. Dr. Harris Mohammed.
She's on. We're ready for you.
Thank you. So we also suggested, colleagues, that we have a work session. If you all remember that, two hours to iron out the collective bargaining resolution as printed. And then two hours for the addressing of the presentation that we also had a couple of board meetings ago. I also highly suggested and recommended that we only talk about those two topics. That we dive into what the concerns were from the attorney about the collective bargaining resolution as printed, because I'm not clean. I would love to be one of those individuals that work. I think I heard Ms. Rizzi is going to chair the ad hoc committee. We owe it to our certified and classified staff that we address this efficiently and immediately so we can move forward with the resolution. If it comes, if it comes out that there are no major concerns after domesticifying the resolution as it currently states, then we can move forward and vote on it. If there are some, if there are some visible concerns legally, then as the board, I would think we would work together to address them. But I would love to work with REA, with an administrator, someone from the administration, as well as Ms. Rizzi, to make this happen so we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed, and you are the co-chair.
Okay, Madam Chair, thank you.
You and Mrs. Rizzi are the co-chairs. So hopefully this coming Monday, you all will have a chance to brainstorm per se and give us some type of framework as we come back. We don't expect you to do the whole, whatever.
One more thing, I hope I didn't interrupt you, Madam Chair, but I didn't think, I don't think I heard someone say the attorney needs to be on this ad hoc committee, but it's absolutely necessary that she is present.
Excellent. And that you and the co-chair can work those, that parameters out, and we'll move forward from that framework.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to get the ball rolling, and thank you for volunteering. Excellent. Is now, ooh, it's 10 o'clock, 10:01. Can we, can we proceed, colleagues, since we're almost done with the agenda? Probably about 15 more minutes? Okay, we'll continue on. Next item is 7.01, receive first read revisions. Since it's a first read, I'm sure everybody can read through that. Any discussion on that at this point, since it's a first read? Are we good? Say what? It needs to be read aloud? We're still on board docs, but if we need to read aloud, Ma'am Burke, do you have that before you? Oh, we have somebody from the administration, Mr. Gams. 7.01. I guess it should be from the administration. Is it connected? 7.01, the technology policy is the first read revision? Okay, Ms. Lilly, thank you.
Madam Chair, I can review them quickly with you. Basically, the policy revision summary has been attached, and these have been posted to board docs, I believe, a couple of times. The technology policy, the proposed policy revision, excuse me. The policy revisions proposed are to update the division's website policy, privacy policy statement. Proposed revisions clarify the parameters of the collection and use of personally identifiable information and the use of cookies while visitors use the school division website. So the changes are noted. I've worked with the appropriate RPS department on the language regarding the use of the website. So that is policy 5-3.13. I can proceed with 702 if you wish.
Please do. Thank you.
702, again, this policy has been attached to board docs a couple of times. This is a policy that the board directed changes to be made. This is policy 3-3.4, purchasing. The policies, the policy revisions proposed at the direction of the school board to codify first and second read process for contracts, requiring school board approval, and to set parameters for the involvement of the school health advisory board and contracts related to the provision of meals through the school nutrition office. Again, since we have a tight turnaround time, if you have any questions or additional thoughts about the language, if you can give them to me by Wednesday, we can revise and have it uploaded for Monday's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No questions or discussion? Very good. 7.03, discuss locations for school board meetings. As you know, this has been on the agenda for a while, and we have decided not to go back to the 17th floor unless that has changed due to the COVID mandates of having enough space around us as we meet. But I know that Madam Burke has, did work with.
Yes, ma'am. I've been working with the city clerk to try to secure the dates for the third Mondays from January 2022 to July 2022.
Okay, but are we straight right now for, so where are we next, next week? We're where? We don't know yet, do we?
Yes, ma'am. We're in council chambers next week.
I just want to make it through December.
Yes, ma'am, but we do not have a location for December, the first meeting in December. Or the only meeting in December.
So that means in Jan, excuse me, in December, for the first, where are we in December? Please break, give us a breakdown. First meeting?
We don't have a location.
Okay, fair, right. So we don't have a location for that one meeting? So I need to know at this point, since this is just one meeting in, in December. Do you want to come back here, or do you want to, we cannot use city council chambers, correct? Because that's their meeting.
We cannot.
So until we maybe move forward to January, to going wherever else we want to go. So everybody's going to be moving, coming here? And I want to thank Matthews, he's still here, and the team that's here. Thank you all so very much. I hear that there are boxes and boxes and boxes of this expensive equipment, which has been excellent. Thank you so much. But on the same token too, we thank you for your hours of manual labor per se and putting this together for us, but it's a big difference in this system, and we can tell it. So thank you. So wherever we settle at the end of the day, this is it. All right, consent agenda, we don't have anything listed there. 9.01, joint construction team, because we were closed last week. We did not have a meeting review for, receive for review financial reports. That is attached. And I thought I did, we do, do have a report from a committee. The policy committee, Dr. Harris Mohammed, you still there?
She's still there. Hold on one second.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that committed timely submitted their report. Thank you so very much. And again, colleagues, I do remind all of us, we included, to please submit your items under that agenda item. Is there any new business? I'm sorry, Ms. Page?
So I have a verbal update for the evaluation committee. So we met on October 13th. We finalized the process, and so please be on the lookout for additional information that will be sent by Attorney Lilly regarding board staff evaluation and board employee evaluation. And the second announcement, disciplinary committee. We have hearings on the 10th of November. Two groups are set for nine to 12, and the second group from 12 to 3. I just wanted to say, only one person has signed up for the 10th. So when we don't sign up to serve on the disciplinary committee, it delays our children to go back to school. Ms. Richardson has sent multiple doodles around for board members to sign up. We only need three members for the first Friday and the third Thursday of the month. Again, when we don't sign up, it just continues delay of our children returning to school to receive their educational learning. So I hope that after this meeting, everybody will sign up. Again, we only have one person for Thursday. If we don't have two other members, then our children won't be able to return back to school.
Ms. Page, we thank you so much for serving and facilitating that. I can go any day but Wednesday. So otherwise, I think I've signed up for a couple. Yeah, Ms. Richardson's already signed me, but others as well. Because if we put it off, it goes back, it means those children who are out of school for disciplinary, whatever reasons, they are missing out on moving forward. So we need to meet, meet their needs and get them back in school. Yes, Ms. White?
Yes, I just want to make a comment, because I heard this also last week. And yes, Ms. Richardson, she did send the doodle back out. And like I said, I think I mentioned this to the, the, the hearing, Dr. I forget her name.
Ms. Dalton?
Ms. Dalton.
Yes.
That those time schedules, they have to be somewhere revised, because on this board, people do have full-time jobs. And I can come on Fridays, and I did sign up for some Fridays. So I'm not sure, I, I hear this coming up every week. But a person cannot stay at one location from nine to four o'clock in the morning. That's a whole day of job. Now you might can do it, but I can't do it. I'm gonna let you know that now. I can't stay no nine to four. If you had a couple hours to do a couple hearings, 12 to two or something like that, but not nine to four on a Thursday. And I, I hear what you're saying, but that's not going to work. Those, those hours are going to have to be revised, because I believe everybody here has a full-time job. I'm just off on Fridays.
We have made adjustments to try to accommodate people's work schedule. So the third meeting is a Thursday, and we started for, that's you making a very good point, that maybe we would need to, before we leave, well, I'm not going to hold people up tonight, but maybe we advise us moving forward, Ms. Page, so we, maybe we have to change a couple of times of the dates. I mean, not the dates per se, but so we can get this rolling this month. If we need to change the timeline, and I think we've done that before, take things in blocks. Ms. Doer?
I was also going to say, I agree with Ms. White, it is hard, you know, to take off time from work for it. So I think that makes sense. I also, it would be easy, I could take time off of work if I also could do it more of them virtual. I don't know if that's an option, but.
Virtual is challenging with that type meeting. It really is challenging. Then the parents are there, the students are there.
Got it.
That's the part of, of, they need to see us. They need to see us. So that's like a last resort with the, with the virtual piece. Yes, Ms. Richardson?
Ms., Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed has an announcement. We'll get to that point if we haven't already.
Did you have another comment regarding that? Anyone else regarding the disciplinary committee? Ms. Page, how can we do this? You're going to, let's, let's try to cap that this, so we're covered for this week, or we don't have any meetings this week?
We only have one board member signing up for Wednesday.
Well, I can't do any time.
We are amenable to all, you know, suggestions. Because also, we have to keep in mind, parents, their, their time. So I mean, a lot of things have to be taken into consideration.
Can we change, can we change the time moving forward? Is that something that we can discuss with Dr. Dalton?
Of course. I mean, so we've already changed the time for the third meeting of the month.
We don't have anybody there for the meetings. We're going to end up changing it, I mean, putting it pushing it back.
We don't have anyone for Wednesday, and if we don't have anyone, we have no other choice but to change it.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, please. Thank you so much. I understand, but right now, we have an order of procedures. It's all right. It's all right. Thank you. But we have an order of procedures. We would, we would gladly talk, we would gladly talk with you. I'll, I'll come and talk with you as well. All right, right now, ma'am, I'm so sorry. All right, I'm so sorry, but we will address your concern. Are there any announcements?
Yes, Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed would like to make that.
Let Mrs. White make her announcement first, then Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed.
No, I just wanted to say, since this week is Veterans Day, I just wanted to say Happy Veterans Day to all the men and women that in uniform, past, present, and future, and I thank them for their service, and God bless them.
Thank you so very much, and we appreciate it having the military. I think this was their first outing for this year, was it not? Yes. So thank you so very much for that, and Happy Veterans Day to you as well. All right, Dr. Harris Mohammed? Well, while we're trying to get her, I do want to share that at Fairfield Elementary School today, HUD sponsored a special STEM program. I mentioned it earlier. There were persons here from NASA, persons here from Atlanta, Georgia. And I don't know whether you all remember Rodney Allen Rippey, who was an actor with Donna Carroll years ago, where she plays a nurse. And he, he has a production company in California, and he's going to, he's already done Hillside Court. We're working through Rich and Public Schools, but also the opportunity in public housing. Carver is going to be a part of it, Bellevue is going to be a part of it. There are communities in which the children live. But today, they were take, participating in STEM programs, not at Rich and Public Schools site, but the recreational site at, through PALS at Fairfield Court. So they had a personal star there today, and the programs to come through HUD for our children to have STEM and STEAM are absolutely excellent. So I look forward to getting more information on that and sharing that as well. And Dr. Harris, that goes back to Shonda Harris, that goes back to her department as well. All right, Dr. Harris Mohammed, ready?
Yes, ma'am. Is this an appropriate time to provide an announcement?
Please do.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I'm in order. Colleagues, if you have a policy that you are particularly looking at for a review by the policy committee, please send an email to Attorney Lilly and myself by November the 19th. Our next meeting is November the 30th at 6:00. Our next meeting is November the thirtieth at six thirty PM through Zoom. So if you have anything that you would like for us to take a look at, we are working very closely with Ms. Lily to review some policies. For the board to bring to your attention to follow our current policy with first and second reads. But time is of the essence. If you have something in particular, please email Attorney Lily and myself. Thank you. That concludes my announcement. Thank you all so much for your patience with me this evening through the telephone. I appreciate our school board clerk. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Take care and thank you for, um, spearheading the policy committee. As you know, that is a requirement under the state. So we thank you so much for chairing it. No other announcements? Go in peace. There's no after, what do you call it, closed session tonight. Thank you all so much.